This conference will now be recorded.
Sir, your mic's off.
Zephyr Hills Community Development Agency meeting. Ricardo, may we have the roll call?
Yes, sir. Lance Smith? Your mic's off.
Here.
Jody Wilkinson?
Here.
Charles Proctor?
Here.
Steven Smena?
Here.
Kenneth Burgess?
Here.
Mayor Munson?
Here.
William Poe?
Here.
Matthew Maggard?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have, first item is citizen comments. Ricardo, do you have anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir, I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Erica, would you like to speak? All right, not now, though. Okay. First business item is 2.1 Clock Plaza redesign, scope of services. Ms. Hamilton?
Um, yes. So, we are looking at the, it's .3 acres of Clock Plaza. We have been talking about this for a couple of years. The design imagines or takes into consideration scraping the entire site and starting all over again. We want to, the scope of services in the design part talks about doing a public meeting, a community meeting on the square so that people can come up and they can see ideas, make comments, and have input on the square. You know, for years, I really wanted to build a building on that square and would say it. And people would just, you know, have no problem telling me-
And you're still here?
That's right. Telling me their thoughts. And so, um, we need to, if we're going to use it, we need to redo it and make it useful for our events that we do downtown now, other things that are going to be coming soon with the advent of the new theater. Having a public space is going to be even more important and making it used. Yes, sir?
Mike? It was '06.
Oh, you're good?
No, it didn't work either, but originally it was '06. I'm sorry. I'm locked out. I'm sorry.
Here, I have an extra.
I just-
Oh, no, that's the six o'clock.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I was just gonna ask about the restaurants that are there.
No, no. I'm good. All right.
I got it next.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I got it next.
Your mic's off?
Your mic's off. Yeah.
Yeah, your mic's off.
Your mic's off.
It's on now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I thought I had, I thought I had pushed it. But there will be several design considerations plus money. I mean, before we tear anything down, we'll have an idea of the cost and can we afford it?
Okay, yeah, I mean, that was the question is, I mean, we know what bathrooms cost, right?
That's correct. We sure do.
So, it may be a-
And pretty ones cost a lot of money.
At lea-, yeah. Four, yeah, four thousand, four hundred thousand? So, really, my question was, will there be a design that shows the bathrooms remaining there and a stage built with the bathrooms remaining?
Yes. And because the council, the city council was or has been forward-thinking in developing a list of C M A Rs and general contractors, we'll bring on the C M A R right away on this project so that we can start looking at cost ramifications from the very beginning so we know what it's going to cost. Currently, we have a million dollars in the budget for Clock Plaza, the redesigned Clock Plaza.
And you're gonna make sure that there's a bathroom?
Yes, there will be a bathroom.
There has to be a bathroom.
We need to do a bathroom. We need to do, even though we have two parades a year, those parades in this community are very important, we need to come up with a plan for the parades and how people see them, a stage that is workable.
Absolutely.
And multiple use. How do we use it? Because if we only ha-, I don't want to say only, if we have two parades a year and we have, you know, one event once a month, but if you invest, the city invests that kind of money, we want to be able to use it every single day.
Absolutely.
And we want to bring people in to use it every single day. So, those are the things that we're going to be talking about.
I also think, once you redesign it, that it'll get used more.
I do, too.
I think a lot of people don't use it because they don't think about it, but once it's redesigned, it'll get used more.
Ms. Gail?
Yes, sir.
I have a question as far as goes to the bathrooms. Are we, we're not tearing down the old bathrooms and building new ones, are we?
The design will show both. The design will show the removal of them and the relocation of them.
Is that gonna have a, if we were to move it, is that gonna have a cost?
Oh, yeah.
Attached to that?
Yes. And so, we will give you that cost. So, we can look at, we'll give you two options, to build new bathrooms and what those new bathrooms will look like and how they will function, and keeping the existing bathrooms and how we will design around them. So, you'll get multiple options.
All right, so, you're talking about then, one option will be tearing everything out, starting over on the whole property, including the bathrooms, as a design for the park.
That's correct.
And the bathrooms will be somewhere else. Or, we're gonna leave the bathrooms and just do the little plaza.
Well, we'll, whatever we do, it'll be the entire red square there. We may leave the bathrooms there and we'll design around them, or we may take them out and maybe put them facing Eighth Street. Or, and I am certainly not a design person, not saying that, I'm saying that the people who are designers say, let's think about where, if that bathroom is meeting its function. Do you, and again, I'm using this as an example, do you build a stage that's close to the street and put the bathrooms and storage behind the stage?
That's how it is already.
Well, I know that.
Here's, here's the idea and the reason why we're looking at this, is right now, you see the bathrooms are set on the southern end and then the stage is set kind of in the northern third of the building. So, if you take the stage and move it all the way back to the bathroom, now you have a hu-, a much larger courtyard for a crowd to be and not, I mean, right now, there's parking, there's four parking spaces there.
And if I could point out, being someone who've used that significant, a lot of times, the parking spaces behind that area are valuable. And the reason why is because it allows the DJ and the people who are using the stage to have their equipment close by, number one. Number two, for people who are wheelchair-bound, who have nowhere else to park, there's a place for them to get there and move, you know, go around or, you know, maybe we can improve that approach a little bit, but they can at least go to the street and go up.
And then, there's also, you see the alleyway behind the bathrooms. That alleyway, after you get past the street or the alley here, it's blocked off on Eighth Street.
Right.
So, you can't go through, and that is wasted space right now. And how do we use it?
Yeah, yes, it is.
So, there's a lot of design considerations and plus, we want to hear from the downtown partners, our, the people that live and work in the area and the groups, the different groups that use it. So, we want to set up an opportunity for them to have their input as well, but we will bring back options for the CRA to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. And I think it probably needs to be looked at. My concern is the same as I've been voicing. We have all these plans sitting on the shelf, a little bit loud, the streetscape on Fifth Ave, Oakside Cemetery, tree planting, the list goes on, and nothing gets done. So, I am not-
I am gonna talk about that tonight.
I'm not for this for that reason. Exhibit to me, you can complete something and then I, you'll have some support. But thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
And I'd like to follow up on that a little bit because I can tell you right now, if we're talking about two designs, that's already more money in design that we don't need to have. If you talk about a bathroom, a new bathroom, well, that's gonna be more money that we can't put into the rest of the project. So, I, I mean, we can kind of make those decisions right up front, in my opinion, of, let's use the existing bathrooms.
Yeah.
And we don't come up with two designs and pay twice as much for the design cost.
Yep.
And you already, you're already putting money towards the projects. Kind of follow up on what Councilman Smith is saying because it's just, there's just too much, like I said, I've been saying it for several years, we spend a lot of money on ideas and not enough stuff, not enough money on stuff.
And if I may, I was speaking to Billy about this on Friday afternoon, and I had said the exact same thing. I think we need to keep the bathrooms because what does that, what do bathrooms cost us at Hercules?
Well, and they can be refurbished.
Well, that's a different-
Yeah, it's a different, they're a different size. And again, I mean, we're not talking highly developed designs. We're saying they're gonna look at it from different avenues and we want to intake, we want to take what the community wants to see.
Can we do that ourselves with like AI or something?
I'm sorry? Yeah, that's a good point.
We can do that ourselves with AI or something. We can, we can do sketches ourselves and then say, this is what we want. The thing I'm thinking about, when you look at that, if you want to try to move that stage back-
And my question is, is it back or is it forward? We've talked about both. You know, if you're going to use the stage in, I mean, right now, you have, we have to find somebody to bring us a trailer that's large enough, and then we have to find steps to, we have to borrow steps to get up to the, for the judges' stand. It would be really nice if we had something that was permanently there.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, what I'm thinking of is you could put something kind of like what's out at the airport venue site on the street, and then you could have kind of two sides to it. Or an open, or an open air.
That's the challenge.
Well, you have an open air, you have it open.
And, and so, again, that's, I mean, that's why we need to have a design team come in and help us lay it out, show us the different possibilities, let the community weigh in on it and give their ideas, and then we'll go.
Okay.
Like I said before, we have, now have the ability to bring in our contractor from the very beginning. It'll cut down on time of doing an R F P after we do the designs and do construction plans and then go out for the contractor. We can do all of it at the same time. They can sit down at the table at the same time the designer does and start looking at money and how much is this gonna cost?
Okay, so, the concept plan in the, in the contract then is basically, we'll prepare up to three conceptual plans, and that's what you're talking about.
That's right.
So, we'll pay for that. That's half the cost of the whole project, is to do the concept plans.
And to do the public meetings.
Well, I know, but the concept plan itself is half the cost. The whole thing is seventy-two thousand dollars. The three, the concept design is thirty-six. So, um-
That's the budget for the whole project, seventy-two?
Yeah, for this project.
For the design, I mean.
For the design.
Oh, okay.
No, for the-
Yeah, because there's hardly any construction documents per se.
No, no, this is-
It'd be underground.
They're gonna do a project initiation, site visit, concept design, community meeting, and then some meetings. Now, who is this from?
G A I, Community Solutions Group.
Are they the one that's up here already?
Yes. Yes, I have an existing contract with them.
This is not good as construction plans, correct?
No. No.
No, this is just design.
There's not a whole lot of construction documents that's gonna be needed for the project.
It's mostly underground stuff, like power and, you know.
All right, so, when we do this, if we approve this, and what do we end up with? Just the three ideas?
You will get three designs and you will pick one of them, and that design, we will go to construction documents with.
How about, how about we change this and we have a workshop with G A I that's here? Council says, this is what we want, and they go design that.
Exactly.
Opposed to putting up-
You don't, you, so you don't want to do the community meeting?
I mean, well, I'm not, what I'm hearing is that I think the board is not in favor of three different designs. So, I think we start with a workshop. This is what we want. We can invite the community. I mean, it can be public. And this is what we want to see, G A I, you know, go to, go to design or go to construction plans and just design it.
Produce a plan. And then maybe we, maybe we distribute it by, by social media, for example, and then have maybe one meeting where we have, like we did the park, where we fill the room and folks tell, give us their designs, their idea, ideas, and then we either incorporate it or we don't.
And I just, let me just say one thing.
Well, let me ask a question. What it'll cost us to have them even come to the workshop? They're gonna charge for that.
Well, yeah, they would, but I mean, I would-
They're also gonna create the construction plans. I mean, we'll go straight into construction plans once we get a design. And I don't, I, I just want you to think them second, all of the board. This is the center point for downtown. It is the gathering spot of downtown. I think we need to be very deliberate in our design choices and trying to make the best design that we possibly can because once we do it, that's what it's gonna be for the next twenty-five, thirty years. So, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I'm not opposed to having an idea of what we can, I, I mean, I think it's a good idea to say, um, we can do this or this. I mean, I think it's a good idea to have some options. I don't know that we need three, maybe, maybe just two.
Okay.
Maybe one is like-
You want to switch it to two? It's fine.
Um, one is like, and that would save us some money. I mean, apparently, they're twelve thousand each.
Well, if I could, if I could, um, with my clients, we do what's called a programming exercise. So, that's where we talk about what are our goals and objectives. Instead of telling, instead of them telling us, here's what we think you should do, I think what's important here, Gail, is to remember is that in the 1980s, we designed this and did it, you know, and we did it, and because what happens is the needs change over time.
Right.
So, it's not uncommon to redesign and repurpose a space over the, over the course of a city's history. So, I think what we need to look at is the size of this space. We're very limited as to what we can actually do there. And if the consensus is, hey, let's just refurbish the existing bathrooms, then that kind of drives the design language, you know, that the existing language of the stage is kind of preset because it's more conducive to the language, the architectural language downtown. I think that, so those kinds of decisions have already kind of been made. So, if we talk about, like, for example, the water feature, we've never kind of agreed on, what are we gonna do with the water feature? That would be one thing we talk about. But maybe that's what we do, is we do, this workshop is really a great idea where we come up with the ideas that are important to us, we have them come up with one design, not completely developed, but conceptually. You know, we'll need input from Public Works as it relates to, we've always had challenges with the electrical system there, we have challenges with stormwater, what are the right kinds of trees to have there? Do we want trees there? I mean, I think trees are nice. I mean, because people do use that space all the time for all kinds of things, particularly enjoying having lunch from there downtown. So, I, I think that idea of a workshop is good. I would support that. And then, you know, come up with, come up with a design internally, sort of, and then go out to the public one time and say, hey, let's, give us your ideas now.
So, when you say, so when you say internally, you mean staff doing it and not bringing on G A I at all?
No, I mean, having G A I come for one workshop with us.
Okay.
So, we did that with the planning, remember? Where the planning, when we were doing the North Corridor, where we had-
Zephyr Hill?
Yes. Where we had them, you know, people in here, and that was very productive. And I think we came, we all had almost the same idea.
It was funny how we all kind of agree.
Yes. So, something similar to that as an exercise, I think, works, for sure.
Well, I think the-
I'm sorry?
I think the, the project itself is not a huge undertaking. I mean, the biggest item is this, probably the stage, where to locate it, how big to make it or whatever. I do think we need to probably take into consideration, as Councilman Wilkinson said, about behind the stage, a place to unload and load equipment, and I mean, you may have to find a place for a handicap spot or whatever, but I think we need to utilize that, that dead space was for something. And then the potential of some sort of a stage or a, I don't know what you wanted to call it, up front where the parade, where we pull the trailer normally, because that might even help the stage where you could do some kind of lighting things and you're up above the crowd and you're kind of utilizing that for the stage, too. So, but other than that, the wa-, the water, electric, that's all gonna have to be done anyways in the design. I don't think we're talking about a whole lot of stuff that we can't come up with in a workshop.
Yeah, and we, and we need to know where the bathrooms are. All right, Shane, did you want to say something?
Yes, if I could. Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. Just a little background on the restroom because I oversaw the construction of that. We did that back in 2005. So, it's basically twenty years old for a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, which I don't think that would even pay for the site work now. But also, the reason that we set it so far back is so that we could get fall on the sewer. So, where the building sits was by design to get fall to the sewer. So, yeah, so that's just a little, little background on the bathroom.
It may need to be there because of the, the way it travels down.
The elevations, right.
Okay.
And you were here when we did the plaza, and I remember when you put those trees in, the initial trees, I was so disappointed. I said, I want trees that'll provide shade in my lifetime. And he said, oh, they will. And they did.
They did.
So, of course, now they're busting up everything.
I planted every one of those trees. So, just a little background on the bathroom.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you. And again, just something to think about because Main Street uses that, that plaza just about every month, and we used it Saturday. Excuse me. There's no storage in it. And having to schlep tables, and we have to depend on Public Works to help us schlep tables and chairs, and the lighting and the electrical is an issue. So, there are some things that those who use it would like to see included if we're going to tear it up and, and start, you know, and redesign it, that we include those things as well.
Well, and that's exactly why I brought up the one out at the park, at the venue, because we've designed that. It has storage. It has, it's high up. I mean, we could just borrow those plans and rebuild it.
Or we could just add rooms on each side of the bathrooms and you have your storage areas and use the same materials and, you know, just expand that structure.
So, what is the pleasure?
Workshop, I think. Workshop. Yeah.
So, you do not want to, you want to table? I don't want to say no to it. I just, could I get a motion to table this?
Well, if, shall we just ask them to come back with a revised proposal?
You can do that.
Okay.
That includes one workshop.
Is that gonna cost us more?
They'll come back with a revised proposal with less, um, less deliverables, less, less work, and then we bring that back.
One design? One set of construction documents?
Well, they're not gonna do the construction. This isn't construction.
Yeah, they'll do the construction documents. They have engineers on staff.
But that would be separate with that.
That is correct. It'll be another. Once you pick the design that you're going to do, then they will do the construction documents.
Would we want public input at the workshop, too?
Sure.
Yeah, I think so.
It's a public work.
Do it all at once. Do it together. We should be working together anyways.
Do we have a motion to go for a workshop and revise?
Do you want to choose the workshop date because we don't want to put it off and delay the start of the project? So, do we want to pick a date?
Would you say what date?
My phone, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna be gone.
Well, not during the Leap of Cities thing.
But that's-
If I can, if I can push, we would, as staff, we'd like to get it done sooner rather than later, to Chairman, I mean, Board Member Smith's statement. If we can get it done, we can get it rolling, get into construction plans, get out to bid. So, if we wait till August, September, it's definitely not gonna start until next fiscal year. So, the sooner we can get it done, sooner we can get it rolling.
So, the youth council usually is on the first Monday, but they're not going to be on the seventh? So, we could do it then, on July 7th?
I'll be out of town. I'll be on vacation. On vacation.
What about the next week?
I'll sign with, how soon would you be ready? Because I think a lot of people are gonna be out the last half of July, beginning of August, right? Anyways.
Right.
I mean, how, how much lead time do you guys have? Can we do it next week? I mean, June 30th or July 1st or whatever.
I have to contact G A I and see what they, they can, they can participate in it as well.
How about, let's do this. Let's, let's get their schedule. And then we can, we can contact each council member individually and we'll get a date set.
Okay.
All right. And we have to work in a-
Fourteenth is a, sorry, fourteenth is a council meeting and budget workshop.
Oh, okay, that's gonna be long.
Yeah.
I mean, we can do it on the fourteenth.
No.
Be a marathon meeting.
No, that's not good.
Gotta concentrate on the budget.
And President, can I ask one more question before we move on? So, I know that, I, we had talked about, there was a property behind, next to 7-Eleven, right in there, behind there. Could that be a property, if it's not been sold yet, where we could put storage and parking and that kind of stuff? I would like to see that as a whole inclusive because that's right, almost contiguous to this.
It would be a great piece of property if, if we could obtain it at a-
Reasonable price.
Listen, you're not, you're gonna, you're gonna get it at market value. That's just what's happening.
He wants more than market value.
But, but, not contiguous, but it's, it's right over in that corner. It's behind that step.
It's right behind the brewery.
The brewery.
Right behind the brewery.
It's right behind. It's, it's a, it's a problem area, period.
That's correct.
And it, taking that problem area out of our downtown is not a bad option. And it, taking that problem area out of our downtown is not a bad option.
It's above market value, above the appraisal that we're, that we can pay for that property.
I agree. But I also know that we can, we, we should look at that.
If, um, this, the board would like, I can go back to the Realtor and say, here's what the appraised value is. If you're willing to sell it at the appraised value, we would, we would entertain that idea.
Can I ask a question? Does that property connect to the?
It's right behind the brewery, right there.
See where the brewery is?
Yes.
And see where the alleyway is down on this side?
Mm-hmm.
It's that piece of property that goes back up to ninth. Oh, wait a minute, I don't think.
You got a point. It's close enough for parking. It's clo, you know.
It's right there.
Uh-oh, it went away.
I can't get it.
Anyway, it's right there. Yeah. Yep. There you go.
Oh, okay.
It's right there.
There is a property between.
There it is. That's the property right there.
Yep, right there.
Is that you or me?
That's me.
That's him. So, so that's close enough to, I, I, I'm not, I'm just saying, we ought to look at these properties that are derelict and not being used and use them. We have hardly any par, parking downtown. Use them in a, a positive way. That could really impact this project in a positive way.
Good.
That's just my thought. And that's just, I know Billy, you're not, I know that's not what, but.
No, it's not. It has nothing to do with that. It's, I just wanted to state that as staff, we've looked at it multiple times. Yeah, and I've had numerous conversations on it. And the asking price is above appraisal that what we're allowed to pay per ordinance. So as a staff, there's nothing we can do. I don't disagree with you that it needs to be acquired and, and get some downtown parking.
And we can.
We just can't acquire it right now. I mean, yeah, there's eminent domain, um, but.
So, and, and who, who does, who does the appraisal?
We have, um, appraisers on staff. We have three appraisers and.
Okay, so they've done one on it?
Yes.
No, we don't. They're not on staff.
I'm sorry, on, on call.
Okay.
And, and the three on call, we've had two appraisals done.
Good.
Because we've looked at it twice.
Good. And just keep pushing it.
And if it's over a certain amount, we have to get two.
Over 80,000?
Over 80,000.
Over $80,000, we have to get two appraisals.
So we can go back and visit them.
Okay, so we're gonna have a workshop. We're gonna get a revised contract. You're gonna look at that other parcel. Do we need a motion for any of this?
No.
Okay, next item is Zephyr Parks and Recreation Master Plan Phase Two.
I can't. Well, I only have two directions on here.
He'll get you there. There we go.
No. Okay, let's, in your backup, you have the Phase Two of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I do, I'm not looking for a vote. I'm not looking for, it's a draft. It is given to you to review and look at. We will come back once we have the final numbers. But I wanted you to see what we were looking at and what our, um, consultants were looking at. And there are, uh, cost estimates that need to be put in for, um, the parks. If there are any issues, I know that, um, they have listed the Sarah Vandenberg Tennis Center, uh, on there and that names needs to, that name has to be changed. There's, um, grammar issues, but they'll take care of all of that. What I'm looking for from you is the vision, the five-year, do you like the 10-minute walk or 10-minute drive for our residents to get to a park? One of the things that the plan talks about is new developments. We have, there are parks and recreation in the, uh, plan developments. One of the things that they are promoting, there it is, thank you. Um, one of the things that is suggested in the plan is that we work with any new developments that come in. And we ask them to provide a park that is accessible to the entire neighborhood, to all the citizens, so that if you are within a 10-minute walk, you can, your kids can walk there, you can walk with your kids. Um, a lot of cities use that. Um, it is, then they are saying that it must be at least two acres. We need to get at least two acres, nothing less. And there's a layout of what a typical two-acre park looks like. It doesn't mean that that's exactly, that it's a square and that the basketball court is here and the benches are there. It's just saying that these elements within the two acres need to be included. I need you to look at that and give me some feedback.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I noticed in their, their little scoring guide, it had Hercules Park is not, is, is not done well. It's done. Are they gonna update those numbers?
Yes, they're gonna update the numbers. The biggest thing on the Hercules is that Hercules scored a three. It's a brand-new park. As you look at the other scores, you will notice, I think we only have one, two. Um, we're going to revamp those parks. And in my director's report, I have equipment for you to look at for all of the parks, uh, and get your input on that. So.
But, but, well, I guess they, they scored a three, but they didn't give the, you know, going down the table, they have like active amenities, passive amenities. It doesn't like.
They didn't put any of that because when they were doing it, it was still.
So they're gonna update all those, okay. So it might not be three, you know? And, and I will say this, if you go to Google, I use Google Maps a lot for input from citizens. Very interestingly, it gets real good marks, but it's a, I think it was a 4.6, which is good. Zephyr Park's only a 4.4. So I find that very interesting.
But if you, if you look at the comments.
Yeah, so there's a couple of people that just are like negative, you know?
But the things that they, uh, like at Hercules are not the things that they like at Zephyr Park.
True, they're two different parks. That's right.
And, and when you look at, you know, vice versa, what they love at Zephyr isn't available at, at Hercules. So it's two different parks.
I think that's true about all of our parks. When you think about, you know, Mr. Harold's Park, and, you know, that's one, and the, and the Veterans Park, uh, you know, it's the character of the neighborhood's different, the use is different. And that, you know, really we ought to look at, do we, you know, do we need to spend a lot of money on some of these parks? Some of them, they would be, you know, better utilized. We did X, Y, and Z, but really just refurbishing like the dog park or expanding the dog park or having another dog park on the north.
Well, what came back in the comments from the citizens and the surveys were, what mainly was the equipment was old and, and, and needed to be replaced. There needed to be more shaded areas. There needed to be more picnic areas. And so when I get to the director's report, I will show you what we've come up with. Um, and you can weigh in on it at that point. But I am giving you the, um, draft. And I want you to look at it. And if you have any questions, give me a call. Let's go through it. I mean, this is an important, this is the next 15 years or 10 to 20 years of our park plan. It also calls for hiring a park person that does programming, that would go to Zephyr Park or Hercules Park on a Saturday and take equipment and get the kids engaged. Um, that would provide, you know, programs for the elderly, um, a wide spe, spectrum. Working with, and we talked about this before, there are a lot of services out there that our partners do, like the hospital, like the wine, but there isn't a person in the city that coordinates that. But that's their job. We could work with a hu, a hospital to do, you know, heart healthy things at the parks. Um, there's a myriad of things that could be done. So I want you to look at it and contemplate it. It is more than the CRA. This stretches out farther than the CRA. But there are parks within the plan that are in the CRA. And so I took this on as part of, if we were gonna get one done, we need to get all of them done. So if you can please, um.
Well, I have a couple of things. One, I was reading the list of the, I, I think we should add the library in here as a recreation spot. It's not a park, but it's a recreation spot.
And how do you, and I'm, I'm asking so I can pass it on to Kristen.
Go in there and get books. They do programs, um, reading. Every kid doesn't want to go out and kick, kick a football. Some kids like to read or do other things that they can do in their crafts and different things. So I think the library should be considered. If we're talking about parks and recreation, we should talk about the library as well.
Well, and really, you know, the gymnasium at the, at the school. I mean, but I think that's not a park that's for recreation.
And we don't own that, so.
Yeah.
The other thing I wanted to ask about was when they, we're doing this, are we talking about lighting, uh, paving parking lot? I mean, our parking lots at Zephyr Park on B Avenue and C Avenue are.
That will be part of the plan.
Depot parking lot, you know, I don't know what's happening there. That's another project that's.
Depot is, is being surveyed and, and the groundwork is being done.
It's been being surveyed for quite a while. I mean, it was budgeted for this year.
It'll be, it's, we're, yes, sir.
If you get what I mean. I mean, it's another thing that. So, um, and then some of the buildings, some of the parks are gonna need, um, buildings themselves. So I think those need to be part of the whole conversation.
Right. And when we get to the equipment, we'll have that conversation.
Can I, can I ask just one more question too? Sorry. So I, I see in here where you've got a potential community center at Cruzen. Is that staff-driven idea that it goes there? Cause I don't think that we've talked about where we do need a community center, but.
The, the idea was Pasco County doing a, um, hardened building. It would be run by Pasco County. It would be funded by Cas, Pasco County. It would include a pool. The reason that they, they said Cruzen was because of their population circle, that they have to have certain amenities in that circle. And Cruzen met the, the mark with, um, what's going on 56, of a development that's going on 56.
Yeah, you can, you can take that out. Pasco County just passed a bond, um, that does not include Zephyr Hills getting any parks. It goes, it's going to Wesley Chapel and Dade City.
Right. So Wesley Chapel's getting a big one and, okay.
And Dade City is getting one.
But I, I do think that we, in this plan, we need to have enough, we need to have that set of where do we want a community center? That we can have events, that we can have programming, you know, it needs to be.
And that is part of it. And there are some things in there that we would like you to weigh in on. There's also some information with the, um, CRA's master plan that you will see at next month's meeting that also addresses that as well.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so I don't need any, um, motion. I'm just passing along. Again, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Anybody have anything else right now? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, you want to go into your?
Yes, I need to go into my director's report.
That's not on here.
Okay. So what we did was Rep Services, which is the Playground Equipment Company that did Hercules, um, we have, they have done work for the city. I have worked with them before. We were asked as a staff to come up with ideas for playground equipment at the parks. That we weren't going to do a planned, um, any type of, of planning for it. We just needed to put some equipment out into the parks. Now, if you don't, the colorization, the colors are all over the place. I think we would stick with the blues and the greens, which are in our, uh, logo. The colors, they thought that red, white, and blue needed to go into Veterans Park. That's why it's like that. Um, so the idea is that there would be shade, play structures, seating areas, picnic benches, bicycle racks, some trash cans, no bathrooms. It's a neighborhood park. And that would be it for veterans.
This is veterans, then?
Yes. The plan, the. No, we wanted to get your input first. And also, the, um, cost estimate will include the concrete pads, the, um, materials underneath the playground equipment. It will be a turnkey operation. They'll do it all.
Like that idea. I think we need to show some.
Your microphone is off.
Tree plantings, oh, sorry.
Tree plantings around that because one of the things that they said about the Hercules was, since we lost so many trees in the hurricane, the playground equipment is very hot. So we need to already plant, and I think we have money anyway.
Yes, we do.
I, I'd also like to see some kind of shade over the seating if we can.
Good idea.
Because it's so hot here.
Okay.
I, I just came back and visited like five parks. And there is such a variety of park equipment out there.
Yes.
That you can buy packaged, you know, they don't all have to look alike.
Right. So, and none of these will look alike. They will all be different.
I like the screening over the playground.
They have to. We have to here. Yeah, for sure. Agreed. Yes. Right.
So this is an aerial view that shows the shading over the equipment. They have done a, uh, layout to make sure that it would fit. They also have put a pavilion. Um, it doesn't show in the plan, but it's a pavilion that's large enough to put two, uh, picnic tables under.
Then you don't need the.
So, you know, um, but we'll bring back cost estimates and all of that. What I wanted to get was comments like trees, uh, coverage, those kinds of things.
Yep.
So we tried to be, or Rep Services tried to be fancy. This is a 3D look at Gunner Park. So the trail, there are shaded structures along the trail, trash cans, benches. Um, the cantilevered, um, shading over the benches, we have asked them, because what I heard at Gunner, uh, the meeting where the community got up and spoke, is that they use the park as their social time.
Yes.
One bench like that where you have to turn and talk to somebody, we're gonna add a bench and make it an L.
Nice.
So that it's a nice little conversation area.
Nice.
Um, the cantilever we're gonna look at because that's an expensive, um, structure right there. And we're gonna see, I've asked them to give us a couple of options.
Don't, don't they have like just individual picnic table pavilions? I think we have some at Shepherd's Park. I mean, those are, yeah, many shelters, I think, would, in my opinion, would be sufficient out there.
Yeah, just so it's covered that, you know.
Um, this is the playground equipment, replacing the playground equipment for the kids. We already have the watering station for the dogs and the bag stations for the dogs. So we're just looking at new equipment, new benches. Um, we are gonna put some type of picnic table and a pavilion out there as well.
Sun shade? Shade, shade over at all?
Everything will have shade.
Okay, cause the playground.
Now, we did, there are a couple of benches that are not in the shade.
And that's fine, but the, the playground needs to be covered.
Yes, yes, for sure.
Gail, just one, um, I know a comment that came out of the talk about Gunner was having the fountain that had the dog thing.
Yes.
I mean, we should consider doing that at every one of the parks. Cause, cause veterans would be one where people go walk their dogs.
Absolutely.
And they need that. And you're talking a relatively inexpensive thing.
How much, do you know, Shane, how much that was? Right off the top of your head? Okay.
You think they're a couple thousand or something like that? Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's definitely.
That's a great idea.
That is a great idea. Thank you. Yes.
Central Park, they do. Um, we've seen.
Everybody walks their dog at her.
Yeah. And we made, we made arrangements for them or provisions for them at Hercules. So, good point. So again, do not pay attention to the colorization. They're just colors to show the difference of the parks. This is Ellis Herald Park. And the idea behind this is this equipment, this size equipment, and these covers will fit where they are now. They are, they are saying we will remove the existing playground equipment that's out there and replace it with this.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a swing. The new swing thing is. The new swing thing is the slide thing that the kids can sit on together. There's swings for babies, swings for middle ages. The thing tries to contemplate different age groups in a very small area. But we want, again, I want it to be bright and welcoming so that the kids in the neighborhood see it and want to go to it. Brown, tan, and brown are going to.
No, would you be, you know, consistent in the colors? Wouldn't that be for the parks, consistent or not? I'm asking a question, I don't know.
We would do them, I would think, in the logo colors.
Yeah, yeah.
So see, the two to five, five to 12 age group in the playground equipment.
And, and Gail, you should, and that last one, it showed a handicap ramp going up there.
Yes.
So I think we need to think about having something for the kids that are in a wheelchair in each one of the.
I, well, you'll see that in Depot as well. This is Shepherd's Park. Again, the master plan calls for Shepherd's Park to have a complete redo. So I plan on how we're going to use Shepherd's Park, but in the meantime, we can put up some playground equipment for that neighborhood for the kids to come and play.
Your microphone is off.
Vandalism. So whatever we choose needs to be something easy for our public work staff to repair or paint or whatever, and I'm looking at plastic, and that's probably the least.
It is a special, it's the same kind of plastic that is out at Hercules, and it has a warranty on it, so that if something should break or mess up, these, these are, these are built for municipal parks.
Okay.
They are not little tiny. Yes.
Etching, you know, things like that.
Yes, we're experiencing that now.
So the, the slot, the, oh, whatever, where it slides down, that is very, every park that we were at this, this last two weeks had one of those, and those were the busiest things.
See, Gail, I told you, a zip line.
I can show you a video.
I told you.
That's what it's called. The kids will spend hours on that, and they'll stand in line to do it.
There's a little kid at this diocese that got killed a year ago from using, playing with his kids on a zip line like that.
So you see, on the zip line, there is a zip line for handicapped kids.
Yes, there's provisions. Thank you. But this is only, you've got that only at Shepherd's?
The zip line is only at Shepherd's because of the size. Now, we could, the space of it, somewhere like Depot Park, it could be added.
Or, or Veterans Park has so much room, that would be, to me, because then we could, it would be a draw. It would be a draw for families to get them there, just to let you know that. Cause the kids love those crazy things.
Well, it's not showing my Depot Park. Depot didn't. Depot Park shows a train. It's a large train caboose that the kids can climb on. There's ramps on it for handicapped kids, so the handicapped kids can use it.
Good.
I think maybe it's not in the slides, because I asked him to go back and change the colors, because it was brown. And it was brown and green, and we didn't like the colors, so.
Well, they changed the color and the size, because I think they had put a much larger, several pieces, more pieces than we had anticipated.
Yes, they had a large train depot and a small one, and a bunch of other things that we thought were over the top. But what I'm hearing from you is dog waterers at every park, the bags at every park, shade, shaded every one of them, tree plantings, seating areas, anything else that I'm missing that you would like to have included.
Well, the infrastructure.
Accessibility, yeah.
Parking lots and things.
Yeah, our parks really need to be ADA compliant, where kids, any, any child can go and play.
Well, and not all.
Not every park.
Not everything, but at least.
But at least there should be some of our parks.
An opportunity for them. Okay, so we've looked at that. We'll come back with equipment cost estimates. The CRA now owns 38214 Fifth Avenue. The closing was frightening, so we owned the lot, the corner lot next to Zephyr Park. Zephyr Park, the CDBG grant application that we applied for, we've made it to the second round. There are six applications. We scored 786 out of it. The next one was 400. So, and we've applied for $10.1 million. So hopefully, we can get there. We have applied for the $10.1 million for stormwater enhancements and park development. Kimley Horn is at 30% construction drawings on Zephyr Park. We would like to come to the board and the council and show the 30%, want to test it. Cause we had to make some modifications because of stormwater. So we want to make sure that everybody is on board, and that's what you want to see. We had originally planned and asked Kimley Horn to come on the 14th, but that is your budget. So we will go back and, and look at some other dates and bring them. Maybe we can do, maybe we can do Clock Plaza and Zephyr Park at the same time, same night?
Yep.
So the commercial grant program, the $20,000 grant program, we are setting up a, a review committee. It will be me, Calvin Schweitzer, our building official, Jessica.
Carter.
Jessica. Carter.
I couldn't think of your last name.
You were out when we decided this. And I'm still looking for a banker. So, a banker, we would like to have a banker on the committee, and also somebody who's not city staff.
So I, yeah, we can help with that through the chamber. There's some people at South Sun Coast that would probably like.
Okay, that would be great.
I have Vicki reach out to you.
So we will try and do the Zephyr Park and, and Clock Plaza at the same time. The entrance signs, the entrance signs will, will show welcome to Zephyr Hills. In looking at the size and the additional lettering, it was going to cost more. I thought that the board was pretty clear about, you know, whichever one was less money, that's the one that we chose. They will verify the Fifth Avenue Monument signs and make sure that they will fit. There was a question about that as well, and we will determine that and come back. It will not say welcome to Zephyr Hills. The ones in the downtown will say historic downtown, welcome on the sides. Hercules Park is going to be featured in the upcoming Landscape Architect News Magazine. The feature article will be three to eight pages promoting Hercules Park, how it was designed, the story on the Hercules Powder Company, and how we honored them, and also our city. So I will work with Kevin, we were just notified, I'll work with Kevin and make sure that it's also spread through our own community. Eighth Street and Oak Side Cemetery improvements. We tried to work with the contractor who is doing the Sixth Avenue Stormwater. He doesn't do that kind of work. Once you approve the contracts with the CMARS and the construction contractors, we will go to them, and we can come up with a plan staff would like. Board member Smith mentioned the several projects. They are within blocks of each other. The idea is to try and connect, a little bit loud, Eighth Street with the new design of the sidewalks and the lighting, and Clock Plaza. How do we connect all of them? The idea is there is more than one entrance way into downtown. It's not just Fifth Avenue. There are other streets that we can improve, do some type of features on, and use, and make the side streets more valuable. If we are going to be successful in downtown, we have got to grow downtown, and the side streets are the way to do it. So we'll come back with more ideas about that, but the idea of connecting all of those projects is what we're going to try and do.
I have one question while you're on the signs.
Yes, sir.
What's the status of new signs for the parks?
They are part of the entrance signs. They will go out to bid. We were just waiting for, to decide on how we were going to do the entrance signs. The construction documents are done. The only question was the median, and we're going out to bid. So hopefully, I'll have documents for you.
Didn't we already do that for the downtown medians? Cause I remember something for $34,000 about a year ago.
Was a different design. It was, and it really wasn't a design, we took what, North Star when they did them? And we just took.
And it was some company bid it, right? They gave a quote.
No, that was, they bid Hercules.
I don't know, I think I have one. I looked, I was looking through minutes, and I'll, I'll get with you on that.
Okay, all right.
And is that, I, I was going to ask you, because I had to ask about a Tina and Joe's revised lease last, y'all, did y'all get it?
We have not gotten it yet, but we are working on it.
Next, next meeting?
Next meeting, I promise. We'll have it next meeting. And that is all I have.
Any questions or anything?
Two minutes to spare.
Two minutes to spare, sir.
Leave the two minutes there.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
That's a busy report. Meeting, anything from council or commission? Meeting adjourned, here you go.
Meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Siding.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, June 23, 2025, 6:05 regular meeting. And first of all, if I had to ask everyone to silence their phones in the meeting, I would appreciate that. And Ricardo, would you do the roll call, sir?
Yes, sir. Lance Smith?
Here.
Jody Wilkinson?
Here.
Charles Proctor?
Here.
Stevens Bina?
Here.
Kenneth Burgess?
Here.
Mayor Munson?
Here.
William Poe?
Here.
Matthew Maggard?
Here.
All right, if we could stand for the prayer, I believe Rodney is going to do that for us and then we'll have the pledge.
Good evening. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless this evening, the council as they make decisions to lead this fine community, our staff as we represent the community, our new staff members, police members, and all the community that we have new in the city. We also ask all the people that are interested here in our community this evening that have come to this meeting, please be with all of us this evening as we all in this room attempt to make our community a better place. We know only through you, with you, and in you can we be the best that we can. We ask all of this in the Lord Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving forward, Madam Mayor, I believe you have some swearing in. Oh, okay. Citizens comments, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, I have Randy Stovall.
All right. If you had your name and address.
Please press the button.
Button. It's new. New to me. Anyway, Randy Stovall of the East Pasco Chamber and I have a couple of things that happened last week I wanted to say to you about. We had a great workshop with AM Skills held at the Genitus Center. And the AM Skills is a reminder is a group that does training particularly for people in manufacturing jobs. They've always been on the east, sorry, on the west side. But you know, with all the manufacturing coming here, they're showing a lot of interest in us. And hopefully this will be the first of a lot of, a lot of times we're going to see them. So it's a really good meeting. The other thing I wanted to say is, you know, Kid Fest happened Saturday night and it was a great event. So I thought Antoine had organized it very well. We had the mayor's youth council youngsters there. And if, I'm sorry you couldn't see it because watching them work with little kids was really neat. And so we couldn't have done it without Ricardo and Sam Aberhoney. So it's a good, a good evening. And then coming up this week, I wanted to tell you about a new nonprofit you may not know about. It's called Our Hope Chest and they're having a ribbon cutting on Thursday lunchtime. And they are a senior citizen service provider. So they're right over here on Gaul Boulevard, so hopefully some of you can come. It's, I think it's in the building that used to be a barbecue. Do you know where that was right over here, a couple of blocks away? So that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up for citizens comments?
No, sorry, I have no one else signed up.
Is there anyone in the, in the audience that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda to the council? Seeing none, I will move forward and turn it over to the mayor.
Well, we're going to turn it over to chief. We have two new officers. We're excited to swear you in.
Good evening. Derek Brewer, Police Chief, City of Zephyr Hills. Tonight I would like to introduce a couple of our new officers and get them sworn in. I'll first call up Officer Noah Yonzer. Officer Yonzer was born and raised in McQuanico, McQuanico, Wisconsin, a small town where a strong sense of community and commitment to service inspired his path to law enforcement. After graduating high school, he entered the workforce to support his family before pursuing formal training, pursuing formal training at St. Pete College, where he graduated in November of 2018. Outside of his duties, Officer Yonzer enjoys playing guitar, hunting, participating in competitive shooting. He values time with his loved ones and is especially grateful for the support of his family and friends, especially his son, who understands the demands of long shifts and time away from home. At this point, I'll go ahead and have his selected deputy, deputy. He's going to pin him. Stand right there for me. Yeah, just stand right there for me. So, oh, no, looking towards me. Yeah. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States of America and the state of Florida and the city of Zephyr Hills against all enemies, domestic and foreign, and that I will bear true faith, loyalty and allegiance to the same and that I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police, police officer of Zephyr Hills of which I'm about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations.
All right, we're good now.
Officer Burke? Officer Adina Burke was born in Abilene, Texas and raised in a military family where a strong sense of community and a desire to serve others motivated to pursue a career in law enforcement. After graduating from St. Augustine High School, she attended St. John's River State College and earned her basic law enforcement certification in 2023. Outside of work, Officer Burke enjoys hunting, fishing, and playing golf. She values time with loved ones and is especially grateful to her parents, who although living across the country, remain a constant source of support and encouragement. She also wishes to recognize her boyfriend Nicholas Whittington for his love, support, and grace over the past seven years. Let's bring him up so we can put a pin on. Words are. Let our PIO take a picture. Someone get that on. That's cute. That's a good one right there. It's okay, as long as it doesn't fall off. Right. Yeah. Thank you for raising your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States of America and government of the United and the state of Florida and the city of Zephyr Hills against all enemies, domestic and foreign, and that I will bear true faith, loyalty and allegiance to the same and that I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police officer of Zephyr Hills of which I am about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. I just want to welcome you guys to our new, our police family. I know you're going to enjoy it here and, and know that we're here to support you along the way. So thank you. We appreciate you being here in Zephyr Hills.
All righty, now if there's anyone that wants to leave, you're welcome to stay though. It could be a long one. All right. We'll wait till they leave. Sure. All righty, I will continue on with the meeting. We have five consent agenda items. We can pass them all at once or any one of the members of the council can forward or whatever one they want for discussion. If not, I will state a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. All right. Moving forward to business item number two, I will turn this over to Matt.
Yes, I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1500-25, ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, admitting the official zoning map by rezoning two parcels totaling approximately 14,548 square feet or 0.33 acres more or less from OP Office Professional to R3 Medium Density Residential located at the intersection of North Avenue and 12th Street. Insisting of our being of parcel numbers 022621005000000010 and the south 44.7 feet of parcel 0226210050000020 in Zephyr Hills, Florida, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. This is a public hearing.
All right, well, thank you, sir. I will open up the public hearing. Todd, is anyone going to speak to this or Rodney?
I would appreciate a recap, thank you.
Yeah, please.
Good evening, council members. Rodney Corvo, Principal Planner. Just to refresh everybody's memory, this was a property that was zoned R3 years ago in 1992. The owner then petitioned the city and the city approved a rezoning to OP. The existing property owner this evening is requesting it to be changed back to the R3. It's our understanding as staff, they've represented to us that they wish to build single-family detached units. The access to the property, which is on the corner, I don't have the map, I apologize, is on the corner of North Ave and 12th, which as you know, is a hotspot corner. Staff is always concerned when we process applications to make sure that we alleviate as much traffic as possible. So the applicants are proposing to have access to those lots. In the other lots, they own all five lots in the row along north, excuse me, the corner of north and 12th Avenue. So they'll be developing that and providing for access on the easternmost property boundary to alleviate the traffic concerns on, for traffic jumping out onto 12th Avenue, excuse me, 12th Street. Anybody have any questions?
So we're rezoning a portion of it. Are the other parcels already R3?
That is correct.
But the whole property will be zone, I mean, developed.
That is correct and it'll all be consistent. So it's all going to revert back to the original zoning, which is R3. So this is not a spot zoning.
Right, it goes up to like Naomi or something.
Correct.
And does, how many homes can you get on there roughly?
I think back of the napkin is four or five at the most you'd get there. Once you consider the setbacks and such on that, in the zoning designation category. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does anyone have any more questions for Rodney?
I do. So Mr. Corvo, do, are these 40-foot lots? Have we seen a preliminary site plan?
The zoning would accommodate 60-foot lots. So they, they need to be a minimum width for R3 is 60 feet.
Okay. And are they single story or two stories?
I would defer that question to the applicant.
Single.
And is the access to the properties from the alley?
There is not, there's not an actual alley, but what the applicant is proposing is to do some type of access easement so that that would guarantee the site access to all five of those lots along the easternmost property boundary of all of those lots.
We don't have people pulling out on a road where we already have a problem with site lines and things like that.
Exactly.
And the, one of the things I sent in my original concern, list of concerns about this property was that the properties be pushed all the way back to the, you know, normally we like to see in a more urban environment, the homes pushed towards the front like we have on, on 7th Street, that those properties along there were zoned office professional and we've been rolling them back to residential again. So, so the question is, again, have we seen a site plan? Do we know how those are going to be laid out?
We have not as staff seen a site plan, no. This is only the rezoning portion of it. I don't know if the applicants have gotten that far to do any preliminary site planning. No, according to them, no.
I mean, I think that's critical as to whether or not I could approve it, so.
Rodney, will we get site plans on this because they're individual lots?
They are individual lots. So typically we do not, planning does not review individual lots unless they have some type of variance or it needs to be replatted or something like that. So yes, good point, Billy, thank you.
Yeah, there are, you best to know.
But how, I will remind you that because there is this access easement that's proposed, we will need to review that access easement and then confer with the city attorney to ensure that that's all in legal compliance.
But we wouldn't see a site plan anyway if it's zoned and it, if it meets the zoning.
Correct, on the zoning portion of it. But because this is a little bit of a unique situation where they're proposing the access along the easternmost property boundary, we as planning will need to review that. And like I said, we will confer with city attorney Matt Maggard to ensure that it's in legal compliance.
Right, but I mean, city council wouldn't normally see a site plan for a permitted property use like that.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. You are correct. You would not see this. This is correct.
We are being asked to rezone, so we're, we have the right to ask any question like that.
Right, so let me make sure, let me make sure the council understands if this is approved this evening, barring there's a variance or some other type of replat or something on these properties, you will not see this again. You are correct. Thank you, Councilman Spina.
All right, do we have any more questions for Rodney? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I'll entertain, I'll turn it over to the council.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any noes?
Nay.
What, motion passes for one.
Thank you.
All right. I will now go to item 2.2.
Mr. President, business item 2.2 is the first reading of ordinance number 1501, an ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, establishing a new, a new temporary moratorium on the consideration of new residential applications for annexations, land use modifications, rezoning, major planned unit development amendments, conditional uses or variances for property over one acre not to exceed 12 months, providing for conflicts, exemptions, severability, expiration in an effective date. I believe do I need to? There's a different version attached to the packet than what, is that right, Ricardo?
The attachment was the older version. So what's printed before council right now is the updated version.
Okay.
Is that this one? Thank you.
What's the difference?
I'm not sure. I think this
the highlighted. All the highlighted sections.
This is the one that I, I submitted to you. Okay. I think just the, the older version he had was uploaded. The one I submitted to him didn't make it, but to, to your portal, but, and this is the first reading, so it's not a public hearing, but I know we can take comment if someone's here then wants to address it, but it's not a formal hearing.
Okay. Ricardo, does someone sign up to speak to this?
No, I have no one signed up to speak to this item.
Anyone in the audience want to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will turn it over to council for discussion. Any questions?
I have a question. So this is not, we're not just renewing the current moratorium, we're putting a new moratorium in place.
That's correct.
And there'll be a gap of a couple of weeks between the expiration of the one and this one?
I think there will be, yes. Yes, there will be.
So somebody could come in in that two weeks and file a project? Do we want to do that? Can't we make this effective on June?
Can't.
We can't, that's it.
It's got to be at the second reading, which is the next meeting, which I think this one. I think this one expires. The current one expires.
At the end of this month or this?
Right.
So perhaps we can talk a little bit about. Why we want to have the moratorium, if there was some reason why we didn't address this sooner and kind of just talk a little bit about the. Industrial corridor and some of the reasons why we are continuing to. To, or that we're proposing another moratorium.
Sure, I mean, the main reason for this moratorium is we're still haven't got the final sign off by Southwest Florida Water Management District. So until we do that, our hands are kind of tied. I don't anticipate this to be extremely long, but I think we do have to revisit it. It's based on the projects that we have. Scheduled or in the queue or. Somewhat have progressed along through the city. I believe we're still going to be close to at our maximum. Capacity if those all go forward. Once we get the new permit, which we're waiting on, so. We'll have to address that and that'll probably come back before you. But the main reason for this is it's anticipated. That we'll have the new water use permit pretty soon, but then we're going to have to address every, anything over that new number. I was city manager waiting on more if there's more to that.
So the one-year permit not modified yet?
So at the last council meeting, if you remember, council approved the agreement with the Evans Orsey. Those signatures were collected from the property owners and that was forwarded to Swift Mud last Thursday. I think it was. We received the. Executed agreement on Wednesday, we forwarded it on Thursday. My understanding is the goal is for Swift Mud to get that on to the August meeting. I think we probably missed the July timeframe. Yeah. So it'd be, hopefully we'll have that agreement or our modification permit. On the August meeting, so we anticipate that being passed then. But as Matt was saying. We still have the issue of that amount of water. There are permit numbers for what we know was coming in, so. We still have to look at what's the next step. What do we do for future development that we don't know about? Or that was brought to our attention after our request.
All right, anymore, just anyone else?
Well, I ask one more question. So we approve this. If we get the permit. Will we terminate this or will we keep it in effect for a while? Because this kind of brings us up to, we need to kind of balance what's coming in maybe.
Correct. I think that's a, that's a conversation we're going to have to have and it'll be council's decision. Do we, do we continue it or do we?
Modified.
I think we need to analyze exactly what projects in the queue are likely to still go forward. Kind of where we stand with, once we get the permit and what the projects are. And then bring it back for council to decide, do we keep this in place and? Do we justify? A need for additional modification or do we then at that time feel comfortable repealing this or in terminating it? And just monitoring it with the, you know, we likely would have to come back again at some point. Just depending on what the growth and what the market does.
All right. The issue, it's not a simple yes or no, because the issue is part of the permit modification is we have to be able to show demand to keep. The capacity that we're anticipating that we're going to receive. But if the projects that are currently in the queue don't take off as fast as we had projected. We risk losing the capacity that we're going to obtain.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and I think we do need to. Put this in place, take a hard look at what we have, what's coming in, because in my mind, I'm thinking all we have is what we've already permitted. What we've already entitled, as I remember it.
Right.
Yeah, if we could revisit it, that'd be great.
All right. Yes, council members.
And again, this does not affect commercial or industrial in any way. And there was, I couldn't find it in the packet here, but. It was something about a single-family or an individual lot of one acre or less. I don't know what we have that's still in the city limits that may be an acre and a quarter or something like that, but maybe we want to change that to like single. Family residence or something on that order, so we don't just put it to an acreage, in other words. I don't, I don't know, we may, it may not, it may, point may be moot because we probably don't have anything over an acre in the city limits.
I think we said that so that single-family lots in the city, it's in the old.
Yeah, and there probably shouldn't be anything.
Right.
Okay.
I would leave it at the acre.
Okay, and that's fine. I just didn't know if there was a situation.
I mean, because then we would get into, I mean, if you're at an acre, you could split it into four units.
Well, I'm still thinking, I'm still, that's why I'm saying we'd call it single-family.
Right.
One residence per parcel, basically. One residence per parcel.
Okay.
Okay.
For me, I think this is important because we don't have our permit modified yet. So I mean, this is a no-brainer here, but. And do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
I move for approval of ordinance number one five zero one dash two five.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will move on to two point three.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two point three. Is the first reading of ordinance number one five zero two dash two five, ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, establishing a new temporary moratorium on the opening of any new. Medical marijuana treatment centers not to exceed twelve months, adopting findings of fact, providing definitions imposing a medical marijuana. I suppose say imposing a medical marijuana treatment center moratorium. Providing severability repealer in an effective date. I'll take.
All right.
This is same as the last, it's. It's not a public hearing, it's the first reading, and I know we do have some people signed up to speak to this.
All ready. Ricardo, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue?
I do have Chad, Penny, Petanato, sorry.
If you could state your name and address and you have.
Please press the button.
And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Chad Petanato, one seven eight oh two St. Lucia Isle Drive, Tampa. First, I want to start with thank you guys for all your hard work and everything you guys do here. I know it's a thankless job that you guys have, but I wanted to introduce. Good Sense, they're a medical marijuana cultivation company that's trying to move into Zephyr Hills and would like to open a half million square foot facility here. And I wanted to kind of explain some of the other benefits to the city that we would have, and I'm sure I know what some of you all are thinking, but I've met with this group and I wouldn't be standing up here in front of y'all if it wasn't a very professional operation. That I believe in, you know, it would be a good fit in our city and it wouldn't make us look bad in any way. So with that, let me see. I brought Matt Morrison, it was Jamal, Jamal, if you wouldn't mind coming up here. Jamal's with Good Sense and he's one of their operations people. We also have on the phone, we have Dr. Anthony Hall as well as the CEO, Jasmine Johnson as well. So they're all available to kind of explain some of these benefits that we have with it and answer any of your questions as well that you guys may have.
All right.
I guess. Want to start? Is Jasmine on the phone? Or on the?
Yes, I am.
Jasmine is here. Dr. Hall's here as well. Yes, and Matt, I'd also like to be able to explain Senate Bill six six six, which is passing soon, which also creates new benefits for municipalities that have cultivation facilities, so. I guess who'd like to start explaining the operations? Or would you guys like any questions about the facilities and how they operate at all?
Why don't we listen to everybody and then what questions we have? Jasmine, would you like to?
Oh, sorry.
Sure, I will begin for one. Thank you all for.
Ma'am, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Jasmine Johnson. I'm at seventy-nine fifty-one Northeast Bay Area Court, Miami, Florida, three three one three eight. I'm the CEO of Good Essence. Thank you so much for giving us the floor. And we're excited to speak to you all about the difference between what we would like to bring to Zephyr Hills versus what I'm pretty sure you've seen globally, what you've heard in the past. We are a medicinal and clinically-led company. I'm very happy that our medical director, Dr. Anthony Hall, is able to join to really speak to. The medicinal effects, but just to tell you a bit about our story, Florida's the heart state to get a license, a MMTC license in. It's also the most valuable license to have. Our group has been at this for eight years, trying to obtain one of these licenses, and we're happy to have it in hand. And with that, it comes with the obligation of building out cultivation, processing. And dispensaries, the seed to sell license. What we found to be disappointing in Florida is that many of the operators, the current twenty-two that are active. Have postured themselves more on the adult-use recreational side, although we are the largest medicinal market with nine hundred thousand patients. The difference between us is that our nucleus is centered around science, clinical trials in the medicinal space. My family, we're in affordable housing, we're real estate, and my background is hospitality and tourism management. We stepped into this space because like many of our peers, our family, and in Florida in general, we live in an aging. Community and my mother, who is super anti-cannabis, super is Chi Chi Chong, and my father, who's never touched cannabis in his life, were not. Avid supporters of me entering into the space until as time would go on in this eight-year journey, many of their friends, which my dad is a veteran. Many of his friends are dealing with opioids and other pharmaceutical-grade products that have caused. Have caused significant damages, injuries, side effects, and they've seen the effects of cannabis. And how it's still allowed their friends and family to have quality of life while going through debilitating ailments. And so that really focused my parents on, hey, if we are going to do this, if we are going to get our money behind this, our family's reputation behind this. Then it needs to be strictly for the medicinal community. And what that has opened up for us in terms of partnerships, we are working closely with FamU. And FamU Mary to establish a research program in the state of Florida. We are working with the Cannabis Research Coalition. And ideally, what we want to do is create a space in Zephyr Hills where we can allow for different. For us to produce different strains and do different research that can benefit the medicinal community. And with that. If Dr. Hall can speak more to the medicinal and clinical side of his experience, because he's been at it for thirty-plus years. But thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next? And sir, if you could, your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Anthony Hall. My address is one eight nine zero zero Southwest Fifty-Nine Street in Southwest Ranches, Florida, three 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 two. I'm a neurological surgeon. I also do some practice in sickle cell disease, hematologic disorders, and also cannabis medicine for the past several years. The introduction to cannabis research was mostly on cancers and tumor. Tumor control and tumor development, tumor restriction. However, a lot of it has delved into pain control, alternative pain management. And some other diseases such as Parkinson's disease. Post-traumatic stress disorder and others. I won't get into like all the diseases that we treat, but there are several. We're looking for a place where we can grow strains that are not. What the average person would use for recreational cannabis, but looking for strains that will help control illnesses and diseases. In clinical trials that can be published, peer-reviewed, scientific journals. The last publication we did was on use of. CBG, which is one of the cannabinoids, not THC, but CBG use and pain control in sickle cell disease, and it was very effective. So. As our CEO, Ms. Johnson, has pointed out, we're very committed to research, scientific basis and clinical management. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
I guess it'd be Jamal.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, the daily operations, be able to answer all your questions.
If you would, your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yeah, so thank you for your time. Barrett McFarland. My address is sixty-two fifteen Tobogee, Wesley Chapel, Florida.
Thank you.
Yeah, basically, to second what they're already saying, we're looking for a sustainable development in the cultivation design inside, so water capture, management systems, closed-loop systems. We're looking to be very responsible on the sites that we're going to be utilizing, right? So we're not looking to come grab power, we're not looking to just run. Frack all the water out the ground or anything like that. So we do have design principles in place that I can actually, at some point in time, provide you guys if you wanted to look at it. But as far as any of the questions and concerns that some people may have, I would like to hear them, because I could probably answer them off the top of my head. One being odor control, light pollution and security management, so.
Council, do we have any questions?
Water use.
Yes, sir.
What, I mean, what's the potential? Gallons per day?
Gallons per day, so it's going to depend on the site size, right? So as we expand, if you were to say. We had a three hundred and eighty-four plant cultivation room, right? That's going to be, we like to use rough numbers, we'll say one gallon per day per plant. That's not realistic, it's really a point three per gallon, per gallon of pot, right? So. And when I mean pot, I mean plant soil. But, no, so if we were to go, you know, let's say if you had three hundred thousand square feet of cultivation space. You're going to be using about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water a day.
A day.
Yeah. So again, rain capture systems. Closed-loop systems, so you're using that same gallons per day that you're capturing, it's going to be usually like a twenty to thirty percent runoff that you recapture. So you're not necessarily using that entire gallons per day every single day, if that makes sense. Again, those are numbers I could also provide, so if you guys really wanted to, I know Costco County right now is kind of struggling with a lot of water expansion development and all that, so. But yeah, that's.
And I ask that because that, the item before that was talking about our water problems.
The water, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Yes.
What size facility are you looking at? And you're looking to be out here on the industrial park?
Yes.
So what, how many acres, how many square feet building?
So we're going to phase it in, but in a five to six-year plan, we plan on having about four hundred thousand square feet of facility space. That's not cultivation space, facility space.
And how many acres?
Sixty, sixty acres.
Sixty? And. Yeah, is this a twenty-four-hour operation once you're up in your?
Technically, we're not, you know, it's staffed twenty-four-seven, but it's mostly security at night. We're not going to be, the operation's not going twenty-four-seven though, so.
And what kind of jobs, how many numbers, like in terms of jobs and what kind of?
Every ten thousand square feet, there's going to be roughly a ten to fifteen employees needed.
Okay, thank you.
Every, how many square feet? I'm sorry, ten thousand?
Every ten thousand square feet, there's going to be ten to fifteen employees, yes, sir.
So on four hundred thousand, was that one twenty or?
So, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a lot, yeah. A hundred thousand, you're talking a hundred and twenty to two hundred, depending on how complex processing can be. Compliance regulatory teams and stuff like that can get beefy, so yeah, the numbers can kind of creep up towards that. Size.
Yes, please.
President, I do. So for me, I think it's important to understand that. For me, there's not a moral issue here. Clearly, this is a medicinal use. It's, it's. Highly regulated. One of the things, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Petanato, he talked about the odor control, there's not an issue with that. It's a tremendous amount of. HVAC requirements for cooling and climate control. For us. You know, our responsibility as the council members is to ensure that the industrial corridor, which we've jealously regarded, I mean, guarded against. Residential development, a lot of pressure, you know, we've all received a lot of pressure over the years to change the use. In some of these areas. So for us to try and ensure that we are using this property and or incentivizing the owners. and/or incentivizing the owners of these properties to reserve those properties for the highest and best use, meaning if you're going to use water, we want to look at how many jobs are being created and what kind of tax revenue. So one of the current concerns that I have is, I talked to Mr. Petnato about how is this classified as a tax generator or revenue for a city? So, you know, normally it would be determined, it would be classified as agricultural. Well, for the city, that's a very low tax revenue. So for us, that would be a concern for me. The other thing is that if we agree to, you know, if you don't have a fully recycling water system, you know, we've got a challenge with that. So we would look at, for example, if you're going to use water, how many jobs are you creating for the amount of water that you're looking at? So for me, it's purely a business proposition.
Absolutely, I understand.
So is there an, like, is, for example, you know, your plan is to make it fully reclaimed water and fully recycled?
Yes, ma'am. I actually started incorporating a new plan and design around gray water management systems so that way we could reutilize that. We already, because of compliance, we have to test water every quarter constantly. There's tons of water treatment systems that we could put in place that'll work at the facility. So just to give you an idea of some of the other counties I've been involved in that initially had some ordinances put in place, the way they did their extension and handout to make things work for them was basically because of some similar concerns, right? So some people, maybe they had a, and I'm just giving you a little bit of a tool here to kind of see, you could kind of give us some kind of a ground, a basis of how to regulate some of this stuff. It doesn't necessarily have to be completely how the state regulates it on its own. So basically, if you say we need, you know, if we can operate here, we have to have some sort of water reclaim management system in place. That's it. You say it, we do it, so.
Well, and we want to see proof of how successful that's been in other facilities or whatever that you own.
So I could actually speak on that as a, technically, I came from growing in Arizona. Arizona has extremely strict water restrictions and have one of the biggest markets in the entire US. All of the designs that I will be implementing have, are coming from the designs I've implemented in Arizona, which is complete water reclaim, so that's not a big deal. It's just, again, it's changing the site plan, come over developments and stuff like that. So I could, it's absolutely something we could provide, though.
So one of the other things we talked about is that if there are changes in federal laws or state laws that would reduce the amount of tax revenue that we've been counting on to allow, you know, to allow a development like this to come into the city, those would be the kinds of assurances that I would be looking for personally as a council member. The other folks may be looking for something different. But for me, those would be the reasons, those would be the issues that would give me the most concern.
Okay, thank you.
And there are no green belt exemptions or any penalty tax exemptions of any sort to do with marijuana?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, sorry.
Well, I guess we're kind of talking about two different things here, because we're on a moratorium for establishing the opening of any new medical marijuana treatment center, so it's not even what we're hearing.
Well, we're going to have a two-week, we're going to have a two-week lack, wow. So what happened?
I know, but.
Were we not worried about it? We should have been.
Not on this one. That was the water, residential. A medical marijuana treatment center is defined a statute from cultivation all the way to distribution.
Okay.
And that's what they've described. So it would, this moratorium would directly impact this proposed use, but I will tell you, there are a couple of different things. We're here on the moratorium. They're wanting to do this project and want to speak to this. We don't have, you know, petition before you tonight for their project. I mean, that's a whole different set of specifics and things we'd have to go in through. But they certainly have the right to be heard, and they asked, and, you know, we encourage that if they want to come speak. So that's why we're here to address it at this time, because of the moratorium.
Okay, I see. Well, yeah, I'll kind of follow up with Councilwoman Wilkerson. First of all, as a business, you know, I don't have any problem with it as a business. You giving us all the point from your side. I mean, we could go to the CDC and Johns Hopkins Medical and a lot of different things, getting other information on the other side of it, too. So I don't want to get into all that tonight, to be honest with you. I just look at it this way. We talked about our industrial corridor, and as Councilwoman Wilkerson stated, we went with this for a long time. We were working on this, and we're just now getting started. And, you know, we have our bookend things that we come in with Mitek and BDUKO, and we're having a lot of interest. We hear from the PDC. There's a lot of interest in businesses coming here that'll be kind of more what we're looking for. We've got to kind of think about the character of our community, too, in this. And, you know, like I said, I don't want to get in a whole debate on it, but I will tell you right now that when we had somebody come on the property where the Mitek manufacturing plant is going right now, they brought in all kinds of experts, noise guys, and all these different people to give their aspect of it. And we felt that we had spent a lot of time and effort to build the industrial corridor to something as a vision for our town, the character of our community, and we listened to all that, and we decided that we had, that's not what we were looking for. And I remember telling the owners of that property, too, and I told them right up front, like I'm going to tell you right up front in just a second. And I can't tell you that, I couldn't tell those owners that in three months we were going to have industrial. I couldn't tell them it would be three years, couldn't tell them it would be 30 years. But it all happened. And that's why I'm just going to tell you right up front now, I would not support this in any manner, speaking, because of what it is for our community, the character of our community, the industrial corridor that we've tried to build up.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Well, for me, as part of that, if you don't mind if I comment on that, our intention is to try to keep the ability to continue to build that corridor. Part of what I was doing is keeping an actual piece of land along the railway to make sure there'd be access to the 5L property to the north, if we could bring in another buyer that would utilize it. I've been here four years working with this property, trying to find a buyer to bring out here, and there aren't very many. We've been able to get one out here. We've gotten two now out of here altogether in this industrial park.
Right, I understand it, but like I said.
400,000 square feet is a significant amount of jobs.
It's one of those things that, you know, we can't say when it could happen. It could happen tomorrow. It could happen 10 years from now. But I just think for what we've tried to do for our industrial corridor for all these years, would be being on ZDC and so forth, the businesses that we're hearing from that related to some of the business that we have right now, and some of the things that we were kind of envisioning all along, I just don't feel like this fits into the character of our community. And again, I would not be supportive of it in any way. So, but I understand what you're saying. But I just wanted you guys to know upfront, and that's the same thing I told those owners of that property. I told them right up front where I felt about it.
Well, for me, the decision to allow a marijuana cultivating company to do business in the city is just an economic matter. It's a public health, safety, ethical, and environmental decision that affects every resident. While marijuana legalization has gained momentum across the United States, allowing large-scale cultivation operations within the city limits presents significant risks, significant risks to me that far outweigh the perceived benefits. For a public standpoint, the city should stand against the commercial cultivation of marijuana to the product to protect the welfare of our community. And for me, I get it. Medical marijuana does help people. I agree with you 100%. I know, I have friends that use it for medical, and it helps them. But for me, I'm concerned about, I'm just concerned about the look of my city, our city.
Do you have these in Tampa? Big city. It's been proved it, and it's in most of our cities around us.
Well, I'm just, I'm just giving my opinion for what I feel about the city that I live in.
You don't usually know it.
I do want to point out that it's actually a very discreet operation, just like many of you probably can't name where the current 22 operators are. It's not something that we want publicly known to an extent. So you won't really hear about any other operators, even though they have millions of square feet in people's backyard because it is very discreet. So I want to put that out there.
Well, like Councilman Burgess said, for me, it's a, it's a public image thing as well. And I just can't be for it personally. And I just want to be upfront and honest with you. I have spoken with you, but I didn't just make this decision overnight. I've met with, I've spoken with Swift Mud. I've spoken with the police chief. I've spoken with city staff on this. And for me, it's just not, and I'm not against medical marijuana. I'm not at all. But I just, I don't feel that it's a good thing for the city of Zephyr Hills. Our logo was the city of pure water, and I just don't want to be known as the city of marijuana. That's just me.
No, I just want to back up, too. As a business, I have no problem with the business myself either. It's, again, just what Councilman Rock said.
Yeah, please. So I absolutely understand the image that you guys are wanting. I would say a couple of things, Ron. We absolutely do not advertise, too. It's very private. Nobody knows. There are a couple of employees, maybe. There's not really a town image, like Jasmine said. I could tell you, I've been in multiple cultivations. I can guarantee you, you don't know anybody that knows where they're at, have no idea. No town's advertising it. Lake County is one of the, per capita state of Florida has more cultivations, period. They have anti-cannabis cultivation ordinance. Here's the thing, though, that I think people that have the mindset of this is, every gas station in this town is selling illegal, unregulated cannabis. Every smoke shop, there's a consumption lounge here. I'm not trying to ruin anybody else's business, but it's crazy that when, you know, we're coming in in a medicinal mindset and we're trying to regulate this and do this correctly and focus on a medicine aspect of it and a business aspect on it, and quietly do this and to work tandem with universities and some researchers. But these guys are just kind of, because of the 2018 Farm Bill, they're able to just use a loophole and sell you unregulated, untested, non-compliant flower somehow. And that is the image of the town. You could drive right down Gull Boulevard right now, and there's higher up. There's the consumption lounge, and there's like four different smoke shops here I know of. So, I mean, I'm just saying, in my mind, if it really came down to that, I would be more, if I were on your side, I would be more willing to help out a person that's going to come into town and do it the correct way, not the today's, modern-day version of a black market. And it's basically like.
Well, first of all, I appreciate that info, because we will definitely be looking into that. But again, I kind of went over how I feel, and, I mean.
Yeah.
But no, it's just, and I do not have anything against medical marijuana. I don't. Yes, please.
Well, I'm kind of, last year when they passed this moratorium, I voted against it. And I voted against it because I believe in, I thought at the time, the market, capitalism, the market will take care of itself, and you won't have 20 smoke shops or how many marijuana distributors if the market's not there. It seems like, obviously, the market must be there because these things are flourishing. I'm not really in favor of the cultivation aspect of it either, and I think it's because of where you're planning on putting it in terms of, and I spoke to you about this, the neighborhood that is very close to where you'll be doing it. There's a.
I don't think you get a more quiet neighbor than a plant inside of a warehouse, though. I mean, how many other opportunities you think would be a better neighbor to a residence?
Well, I mean, that's.
A vacant warehouse.
Yeah, and I've thought of that. I thought, you know, what kind of engines or motors or something else could go there. But I have a question I'd like to ask Matt that I probably should have asked sooner than this. It's, the ordinance references Senate Bill, I guess, 8A, and it says that they preempt local governments from regulation regarding cultivation, except for as provided in SB 8A. Do you know what?
Yeah, basically, you can prohibit them completely or allow them wherever pharmacies are permitted.
Oh, boy. So you can zone out, you know.
Right.
You can't be in the C2, but CVS can or something like that. Okay, all right, that aspect. All right, all right, thank you. So anyway, I'm kind of confused.
But the market's pretty, you know, the lobby's very strong, and so it doesn't mean that there couldn't be a change at any given time. So if we entered into an agreement with these folks, it would be to, you know, in an effort to protect the residents and the revenue. But it doesn't sound like we have a consensus, so.
Well, and that's the thing. I think that.
If you have the law of taxed, all of this would have taxes on it.
I know people who use medical marijuana. It's been very effective for them, so I'm not against that at all.
And there's also a number of bills matriculating through the Senate right now.
Well, your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Matthew Morrison with the MTM Law Room, 5121 South Lakeland Drive, Lakeport.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir. Could you speak up?
Sorry, I tend to go through that part pretty quick.
You can pull that mic closer if you want.
So, you know, there are a number of bills that are being proposed, bills that are trickling through various committees. There was one bill that Petnato brought up, which was Senate Bill 666, which is kind of a funny, you know, number for it. But, and that bill unfortunately was withdrawn. Not that it didn't carry favor in the committees, but it was primarily contingent on recreational use. Now, I think what Florida is kind of seeing, which we're going to see kind of an evolution of this, is that we're kind of at a crossroads in Florida in terms of the market itself, which is, there's a big market for it. At the same time, I think there are a lot of folks out there who in the government, state government, are trying to figure out how to regulate this. And they also want to find a way to put more tax dollars into the localities' municipalities' pockets. So 666, the component of it, was trying to find a way to say, hey, we will tax certain ounces of what is collected through the cultivation process. And if that's the case, then it would also provide an opportunity for the local retails to be taxed by the municipality up to a certain number. So that's just one example. Now, it was withdrawn, but again, it's going to be probably brought forth in the next session. But, you know, this trend of trying to figure out, hey, well, this is occurring in the state of Florida. Now we have to find a way to regulate it. There's going to be a great deal of regulation as we try to figure out what's going on with this particular space and this industry. So where we are now is it's kind of split, right? We recently just added a huge bill that wasn't successful, but it's going to be back on the ballot here soon. So the idea is if that's going to happen, how can we benefit, you know, all the counties and cities? So I take what you said, Ms. Wilkinson, as very important. How can we benefit the municipality? And I think that's one of the ways that's going to occur. So if you have an opportunity to allow such an operation, that's something that's coming down the pipeline. That could be a future benefit in a different way. It's an upstream way. It's not necessarily a direct benefit, but it's an indirect way of getting a tax revenue from this particular industry. So that's just my two cents on it. But there are other bills out there that we could argue with that are going through the process, but that's just one. That seems to be one point.
And I just want to also add the point about the jobs. We are talking about careers that are over 100,000 to 150,000-plus salary. So I just want to keep that in mind. Again, a very discreet operation. If we had to really name top two or three cities in Florida that have been known for cultivation, it's almost impossible. So that idea of that's the reputation of the city because of cultivation, we don't want that. You all don't want that. No other operator wants that. Tax revenue, working directly with you all, we want to do all of those things. And if there was anything great that would come out of this is that the city of Zephyr Hills is behind medicinal, clinical cannabis, if that is the, any type of effect on reputation. Again, I come from a very conservative family. This is not that. This is just an economic opportunity for locals. I would tell you right now, Jamel lives very close by, and the previous positions that he had, he would have to leave about two hours away. Several of our team members on the call, that's their same experience. They are very close to Zephyr Hills, somewhere in Zephyr Hills, and now they have to leave an hour and a half away from you all to go to these jobs. So I just want to put that out there. Out of all the license holders, we are the Floridian owned and operated, which most of the companies, they've already gone to Canada, or they're public, but we are holding the integrity. It's been a long fight for us. We would love to bring the city of Zephyr Hills, of course, with you all's blessing. So I appreciate the time and then the opportunity to speak in front of you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I ask Matt another, or Matt, another question? So this ordinance references distribution centers as well as the cultivation center.
That's right.
So.
Because the state categorized them all as one.
Right, and it says in here, licensed medical marijuana cultivator, processor, and dispenser.
And I think he testified, he stated, and I didn't want to say testify, we're not in a hearing, I think they intend to do the same thing. I don't know if they're intended to distribute, you know, retail.
I don't know if they're intended to distribute, you know, retail, but.
Uh, no, our operation will be limited to the cultivation processing. And of course, of course, once that item is packaged, um, which is completely childproof sealed, then it's, uh, distributed to our retail locations.
Um, it just kind of feels to me that it's, for, for me personally, it's hypocritical to say I support medical marijuana and the benefits of those kinds of things and then say, but I don't want the, the grove shaft in my backyard, kind of a. So I just struggle with the idea that.
That's one of the struggles I've had as well.
You have to, you know, in order to have, anyway.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of hypocrisy. I mean, if we think about the word marijuana in the first place, which doesn't sound anything near close to English, it's intentional, it's intentional to disconnect that from cannabinoids, which is disconnecting from the endocannabinoid system, right? So cannabis, cannabinoids, endocannabinoid system, which is more common than your nervous system, skeletal system. But we don't talk about this in, in, in medical, we, we just don't talk about it. And it's a, it's a huge crime and, you know, at least DARE, which we all grew up with DARE, they removed cannabis and marijuana from, you know, the, this idea that's been pushed on us. But it's, it's very intentional. And when we see the state of Florida calling marijuana, we know exactly what's going on because it's called cannabis. And that disconnects it from science. I, I hate, I hate the word marijuana.
And, and, um, you said that it would be, um, four hundred thousand square foot building, um, um, yeah, phased in.
Phased in, we're starting with fifteen thousand square feet. We've actually, um, gotten the surveys and plans done. We're waiting to get them stamped and, uh, we were, we were hoping for positive feedback this, this meeting to submit them um, for site plan review and move forward on that fifteen thousand square foot, uh, footprint and the closing of the property. Ideally, what we were hoping was in the conversation to get a bit of positive feedback or just what the apprehensions were with hopes that with evidence or supporting, you know, documents, we can, we can at least gain a positive posture from majority of the board to move forward with confidence. Um, you know, we're not, this is what we deal with across the board, so we're not necessarily taken aback by their responses. But I cannot stress that nobody will know that we're there.
Okay, and sixty acres total, you said? They would, you would be purchasing the entire sixty acres?
Yes, um.
We have set.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, and, and I think you're right. I, I think we've probably went by some of these grow houses and we don't even know it, you know? Um, just because I, we had looked at one time doing some, uh, some ornamental. And you, you know, it's the same thing, you go by there, it's a very, uh, nondescript place. Um, so I don't, in my mind, I don't see that as a negative so much. Um, water is a concern, obviously. Um, I know people, like everybody set up here, that have been, their lives have been improved by medical marijuana. So it, it's a, it's, it's very difficult. It's a difficult thing, you know? And it's a difficult thing to say, well, just like Councilman Spina says, well, I support it and I think it's helped, but I don't want it in. You know, that, that's.
Kind of.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a tough, that's a tough thing. Um, the other thing I think about is like, I don't know, is it, is it allowed in Pasco County? So they could.
Right.
pop right across the street and do the same thing, you know? I don't know.
There are some right on the outskirts. Um, we really do like this site, uh, and we, we love working with Chad. Um, you know, I know often the bigger companies who have endless pockets, uh, bring in lobbyists and attorneys and. No, we're here, we, we want to, uh, I'm in, um, London for Cannabis Europa, which is, which is a huge medical cannabis conference. So it's, uh, twelve ten AM here. But had I not been here, I would have been there in person and, um, you know, we're, I, I believe we're as honest and as true to this as, as it can get as a group.
Yeah, and then the only other reservation that I would have would be, okay, if it's an ag, is it, is it considered an ag use? You know, that would be something in my mind that would be like, okay, it's a killer because ag exemption is a huge, you don't get any property tax.
In fact, on our plans that we will be submitting, it's actually called GE Warehouse. We are there with you, we're there.
So, I mean, and I'm, myself, I'm open to it for a number of reasons. So it's medical, it's a job provider. And from, and now tell me again, every ten thousand square foot, you said ten to fifteen? So you're saying every hundred thousand, there's a hundred jobs created? And then what is the, what is the average wage?
Like a hundred. So our, our chief, our chief cultivation officer is starting at one fifty. Our directors are at a hundred, a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand. Managers are eighty to about a hundred thousand. And then our lowest paying position would be our cultivation technician. That's a person that, um, will learn and pretty much do everything throughout the cultivation process. If we need extra hands for trimming or packaging, um, that job will be starting at about forty-five plus thousand a year.
How many years would? How many years would it take you to, uh, build up to the four hundred thousand square feet?
We'd like to be there in three years.
I'm sorry?
How many years?
Three years.
We'd like to be there. The other question I had, you said, um, that you would use up to a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water a day at full capacity. Billy, um, last week, what this Evans and Orseen, Orsi agreement? Um, we would have access from that for, to a hundred and forty thousand gallons a day? A hundred thousand, a hundred and forty thousand gallons per day? Was that right?
We were, we would get additional water from that well, but that was part of the, the.
Right. In, in the minutes, it says the landowner has permitted capacity of seven hundred and ninety thousand gallons per day. The city will allocate six hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day for their use and have access to the remaining a hundred and forty thousand gallons.
That's part of the, that's part of our permit that we're expecting. So that additional one forty number is what's needed for the residential development center in the queue. So that was all taken into account. So it's not, there's not just, it's not extra free water sitting there. That's part of the permit that goes towards the, the developments in the queue.
Right, but I guess what I'm getting at is this is a lot of water.
It's a lot of water.
Yeah, so again, dude's not wasteful, so we're not running the waste.
You, you would, you would be used, you would be.
Sorry, yes, sir. Two gallons. Yeah, I will. Yes, sir. So I'll be doing what, a closed loop system basically, so I'll be recirculating. So what I'll do is take about the thirty percent runoff of the water, reclaim it, reuse it. Um, so it isn't a true number that you're seeing per day, right? This is going to be mainly on a every three to five day basis of water rotation. Uh, Matthew, I have a question for you. This particular ordinance that we're going to be looking at this evening and voting on, does this affect what they're doing at all?
Uh, yeah, we, it puts a moratorium in, so we, we wouldn't be able to take an application for their project during the time of this moratorium.
Thank you.
Uh, but we do, I mean, that is what we're here for tonight. I know they wanted to address that, but I will say that if we don't pass a renewal on this moratorium, that because the state puts cultivation, processing, distribution, all in the same category, medical marijuana dispensaries, which they call treatment centers, which also is what they call the cultivation, it's all called treatment centers, can go anywhere C two, anywhere pharmacy can go.
Right.
So the point is, I think planning's working on some, um, different regulations to, to implement. Um, and we don't have those, so that's why we brought this before you. Now, I don't, if we get those in place, and I don't know if that's a month, if that's two months, if that's six months, I have to lean on planning and what that does to this project in particular. But, you know, that, that's the facts, that's where we're at today, so.
Yes.
Can we separate cultivation?
No, I think that, well, I'd have to look at that. Well, it's a bigger question. I mean, I've never seen something so broad defined in one definition, but.
There are some cities that, that do not allow the retail aspect, but, um, for this, what the state needs to see on our side in terms of, uh, the state being allowed, allowing us to get an approval, they have to see the municipality or city allows it. So if you all say you allow cultivation and processing, the state will need that evidence of that for them to grant us the actual approval.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to look into exactly what we can and can't do.
Because I thought that the retail would, that we were completely, our hands were completely tied, that we couldn't say, no, you can't do that. If you want to have a pharmacy in town, then you have to allow medical marijuana.
No, you could say, you could say no to all of it or yes to all of it. So that's, oh, yeah. So that's when we put the moratorium in place to figure out what we want to do. Because at the time, it was all or nothing.
Well, can I say something?
Yes, please.
I'd like to get back to the water because, um.
And that number was actually less than half of a hundred and fifty thousand a day, that's two days a week. So we're looking at three hundred thousand gallons per week, not a hundred and fifty thousand per day. That's on a watering day, is what he's trying to say.
Okay, all right, because last week, we approved a utility services agreement with landowners that would net us a hundred and forty thousand gallons per day. And I don't want, and then, then we just passed a moratorium on residential units because of the water situation. And so I don't want to, and then we have purpose, well, I don't want to go back and say, last week, we just netted a hundred and forty thousand gallons a day. And then this week, we're gonna get rid of that, which we, which we need, yeah, so.
So we're not really even netting that hundred and fifty. I mean, that was, that was for that project, but that was factored in and was relied upon as we conveyed to Southwest Order Management, Order Management District, that, that, that was the plan.
Well, that adds to our.
That added to our number, but that doesn't push us above what we already.
No, I know, but I mean, what I'm saying is, we say we take that money, that water in, and we approve this agreement so that we can build our water usage abilities. And then the next week, you come back and.
Well, and we've been told that, you know, that we've reserved, that we've reserved water for the industrial corridor, for the development of projects in the industrial corridor. Is that true or is that not true? Sorry? Or is that accurate or not?
That's part of the overall, um, plan, that that number's rolled into that four point four nine that we asked for.
Okay.
But we couldn't really accurately, accurately predict that because we could, we could have a very low water use.
Right.
User or, or high water user. So I mean, it's kind of hard to plan in the industrial area for the water itself, I would think.
Correct, yeah, and, and that's, and I've, that's been the cover, excuse me, the conversation that we've had with several different industrial users that have come in. I mean, the first question we asked them is, you know, what's your water use? Um, and that was a conversation with Baduco, Mytech, Tibbetts. Um, what is your, your daily water use or requirement? Um, and PDC knows that we can't have a, a large water user.
Right.
Thank you.
I know we have a lot of discussion, but I believe the police chief wanted to say something, am I correct?
Yeah.
Please.
If he could have the stand, please. Thank you.
Derek Brewer, Police Chief. So obviously I provided you guys with some information to help arm you with some questions. Um, and allow them to dispel those, those concerns. Um, my personal bias is I don't want to be part of your decision. Um, if you feel like it's right for the community, then by all means. Um, but I, I do want to remind you of a few things about when we started discussions about the dispensaries uh, years ago, and many of you were on the council. Uh, we talked about the professionalism and how they're going to look and the security of them. Well, and some of them are, but we also have one at the corner of North Avenue and three oh one that has a guy waving a marijuana flag out in front of the business to try to drum up business.
Right.
That's not a look that we want.
Right.
Um.
Definitely.
Not a gas station.
Excuse me, let him, let him finish his speak, thank you.
It's, it's a standalone building at the, at the, right by the, the drugstore. I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about. Second of all, if, if you remember, um, and don't get me wrong, these are first secure facilities. Um, I, I understand that there's security concerns that come with these. If you remember, we had individuals shut down our power grid to break into our marijuana dispensaries. It grabbed the attention of the national news because they thought it was a terrorist attack. So, and they can, I, I understand that they can spin it the way they want to spin it. My personal opinion is, again, I don't think that's what we want, but, um, I just want you to understand that obviously, they're trying to sell their product. I'm trying to tell you what I believe is necessary for the city or what is responsible for the city. But by all means, you guys make those decisions, I don't, so.
Can I ask Chief of Police?
Chief, have you seen, um, more crime or break-ins, uh, around dispensaries than say you would, um, a, a fast food place or something?
No, I would say that we haven't. Um, I don't have those numbers in front of me. And I do think that since Duke provided a little bit more security at their, um, um, locations, that it did make it a little harder for them to shut down the grid because ultimately it is really good security at these dispensaries. And that's really the only way you're going to get in is if you shut down their power. Um, but again, that was, um, fairly significant. Um, and, and I, and again, I, I know they're going to tell you it's secure, but it's criminals, they're going to find a way.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any more questions? Yes, please.
Nope. I'm ready to move on. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you. I appreciate you all coming in and you were very informative. All right, next on the agenda is the finance.
So we have to make a vote.
Well, this has been a long.
So.
Maybe I need some medical marijuana. Yeah. Um, anyway, you can.
I will, I will, just, I'm sorry, if I can mention one more point, just to the advertising aspect. Um, we're, we're fined incredibly, uh, a significant amount of fines for advertisement. Uh, we're not allowed to market the product. And, um, unlike smoke shops or what it's, it's, it sounds like you're describing one of these fake type of structures. Their accountability is not there. If we do something like that at a retail location, which is, again, we're not referring to that for this, uh, uh, for context of this, but if we did that at a retail location, we could be subject to fifty thousand, one hundred thousand dollar fines or, uh, loss of our license. So that is, I don't think any MMTC is trying to fall into that area.
All right, well, thank you, ma'am.
Um. And I think, um, Mr. President, if I could, I, I'll, I'll go ahead and start the motion, but I think it's important for the folks here with us today to understand that on my part, this is not a punitive, uh, action in any way. I think we've heard from the rest of the council members that, um, the lack of control over some of this is, is concerning for, for some of these folks. And I'm, you know, for me, again, I, I've stated, it's really more of a business decision that for me right now, the issue of water is the most important thing. Unless you can, you know, provide facts and figures that say, okay, this is a, you know, we're not just going to recycle thirty percent of our water. Here's how we're going to have a negative impact or we're going to have a positive impact on your concerns. So that the next industrial user that comes in, they're going to have a high bar to, to match. Um, but the, um, but at this time, since we need to make, we need to make a motion, I'd like to, I'd like to approve or, um, most, make a motion to renew the MMTC moratorium um, on its first reading, ordinance number five, one, five, zero, two, dash, twenty-five.
I have a motion.
Well, and I'd like to, um, for a second, say the same thing. It was good to hear from the chief and, and that's an important part of it because we did only hear one side of the story. And there is, there is two sides of all stories. And we have the water issue is, is a major problem. And, um, also, as I said, that what we've tried to do on the industrial corridor, all the work we've done. work we've done on that, I, I, you know, again, if you already heard, it's, it's mine, it's nothing to do with the business. You don't have a problem with the business itself. But it's just not what I think we vision for the industrial corridor, and so on that I will second.
All right, I have a motion in a second.
Before you have, before you have discussion, if I may, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate that this isn't a denial of, of their project, but consideration of their project.
I know that.
What's before you is the ordinance on the moratorium. And, you know, I explained the timing issues to the interested parties, or at least to Mr. Pettinato, that if you don't want the, the treatment centers all up and down 301, we have to extend the moratorium. Now, I don't know how long that can be. I think we can maybe expedite some things, but I want to make sure the record's clear. This is, this wasn't a consideration of their project, it's not a denial of the project, that this is a renewal of it, but new, the implementation of a new moratorium, so we get the, you know, what the city feels comfortable with for direction going forward with, whether it's breaking out cultivation separately, or whether it's, you know, I know timing's an issue, and, and that's unfortunate. But the, the issue today is whether we pass the moratorium, and it's not an approval or denial of that project. Just want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you for that clarification.
And I have a question related to that, then. So how to, what do we do going forward? How do we govern or allow for permitting without having moratoriums for everything we don't want? I mean, how do we, how do we, I mean, we have a moratorium on storage units and, and guest, car washes and the outdoor store. I mean, how do we govern without, how do we govern without, we don't have one for car washes, but we talked about it.
Yeah, so, I mean.
I might eventually, yeah.
What I want to know is, how do we operate without just moratorium? What do we, what is our goal when, when we approve this?
The goal is to establish some kind of guidelines, whether it's an outright ban on, on MMTCs, or whether it's approval of cultivation and not. I'd have to see if that's.
Okay, but what have we done this past year to do that? Have we done anything?
I, I, I can't speak.
No, we have not. I'm sorry? So how do we, all right, well, I mean, I think that we need to come up with a plan or a policy or.
A narrative. Right, we need to have a narrative.
Yeah, we can't just keep.
And say, here's, here's what the city envisions for our industrial quarter. And here are the things, we have a table, and here's what falls in that table. And if it's not something that we want, then when somebody buys a piece of property in that area, then they know what the restrictions are gonna be. Because it's hard to do business. You know, we want to, we know, we want to be business friendly, so it's hard for people to do business and for real estate developers to sell their property if we aren't clear about what's gonna work and what won't.
Right.
When they have said, you said there's four hundred jobs, well, good paying jobs, I'm not talking about yet. So isn't that what we're trying to do on the industrial corridor? You know, I, it's, and it, and while there is a stigma, it's kind of like, and, and I think by passing this, we don't necessarily slam the door shut, like we said. We've got to start looking at all these moratoriums and figure out ways that we can integrate.
Yeah, we can't just keep extending these down the road. I mean, at some point, you have to.
Right, to.
Make a decision.
I mean, and, and me, I personally, I don't want any other dispensaries here, but what these people are, are proposing doesn't sound like we would even know it was there, you know, other than employing a bunch of people at high paying jobs, so.
So to answer how we get these moratoriums is, the state passes law tie in our hands, and we have to make a decision. We don't have enough time to make a decision, so we put a moratorium in till we figure it out. I can't speak to exactly what's been looked at or not looked at, and, and with regards to the medical marijuana, I think the storage, the planning department's crafted regulations, Land Development Code stuff, and then the water, we're waiting on a permit.
Well, I understand the water, but I'm just saying.
So this one, I, I'm not sure, you know, I, I don't know, I think all of them, things change. We want to change direction. We see a rapid change in, in either the law or the use. So you put a moratorium in place, it's a great tool for that, to develop some standards. I agree, we need to get some, we need to figure out the direction of the city on this, and, and I'll get with planning, and city manager will bring something to you on that.
Well, in all due respect to our chief, one of the things that I would ask for before we approved of, of something like this would be that, you know, that we do a study and that we determine, you know, because I know of, of, one of our consultants does nothing but HVAC design for these big centers. And he's done them all over the state of Florida, and they have very sophisticated security systems, and they're very discreet, and a lot of times, folks don't even know that they're, they don't even have signage or anything like that. So, you know, I, I would, you know, I think that that, what the, the, the comment about Duke, what that you made, I think that's kind of an isolated incident. I don't know.
No, I agree, and I want to make something perfectly clear. Whatever it is, the direction you decide to go, I'm not even saying that this company is not the model for this type of business. What I'm saying is, it's the next guy.
Yeah.
That's what I want you to consider, is the next business.
And these retailers.
Because that's exactly what happened with the dispensaries.
Yeah, the retailers, we should crack down on them. There's nothing to say that we can't create some new regulations regarding advertisements, you know.
Well, that's why I didn't even realize that this had anything to do with the other, because it doesn't say it in the moratorium, in, in the ordinance. So that's why I didn't realize that was part of it. But we are giving our planning department ample time to get something worked on, then.
Can.
Thank you, Chief.
I, I, can we ask for a review in six months of what we're doing and, and how we're looking at this issue?
You'll have it before six months.
Okay, all right.
Would they be all moratoriums, or?
No, no.
The only other moratorium that we have open is the, the housing.
Okay.
No, we, we.
It's been addressed, hasn't it? That was already addressed.
Yeah, we revised it and are going through with it.
All right.
Just to look at, just like, you know, reclaim one.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
So I have passes.
Four to one.
Four to one. Thank you. Moving on, Finance Director's Report.
Ted Beeson, Finance Director for the city. Before you, for consideration is a change in our travel per diem policy, which is what we pay for meals when there's travel and training for city council or for city employees. The change is that we would prefer to go ahead and say GSA standards calls for, in the example put before you, travel to Tallahassee, eighty dollars per day. They also have standards per meal, breakfast, lunch, dinner. We would very much not like to regulate the per meal prices that come through. We would like to say eighty dollars per day, provided that the conference, where you're not provided with a lunch, you're provided with a lunch, then we will do an appropriate reduction. But just basically, per day with those GSA standards.
That would be very nice.
Yes, we, believe me, we don't like going ahead and, and regulating that. The other change would be the city employees would be armed with P cards, and that they would use those P cards rather than having travel advances. Those are the two major changes that we put forward. Any questions or concerns?
Yes, this will make your accounting a lot easier to track, won't it? I just do on a daily amount, or?
It, it'll make it a lot easier on the accounting, yes, sir.
Right. I do have another question. So what happens if an employee uses a P card, they don't have a receipt, or they don't, what happens if it's, huh?
Pay it back.
They have to pay it back through their.
If you do not have a receipt for gas, food, lodging is pretty easy, go back and get that receipt. But if you use a P card and there's not a receipt provided, you will pay the city back for it.
Through your pay, pay stub or something like that.
We tell them what they're, what they owe, and they bring the money back.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Because I know that, you know.
I have a question too, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
We have found in a lot of cases that if there's the incentive to find a receipt, the receipt will be reproduced somehow.
Yes. Billy takes pictures of everything.
Mr. President, if I could, you know, Mr. Beeson, it is a challenge, however, this whole tax exempt business. When you're in a restaurant, in a hotel, and they're doing the, they're doing this, you know, they're used to people presenting a certificate that says, we're tax exempt. It's different if you're offside at a Denny's or whatever, trying to get a breakfast and.
Can I, can I interrupt real quick?
Yes.
We do not do tax exempt for food.
Okay, great.
I thought that when you do the per diem, you don't need a receipt, you just do the eighty dollars, and that's it. We do that if we do a travel advance to the employees. But what we're suggesting is, that's not, we would like to go ahead and use P cards and say the overall total.
Okay, all right, thanks. So, correct me if I'm wrong, so do we still need to save receipts?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
Turn in your receipts.
I think we need a motion on this.
Move approval to this item.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes you now.
Thank you.
Item three point two.
Yes, three, three point two. We're coming before you again. Carlisle Thompson has been assisting the city, city in making our case for Milton to FEMA, and to be able to seek reimbursement. We've come to a situation where we've had a number of projects that we've put before FEMA, but we are going through phases of facing question, question and answer sessions with them. And I do believe the Carlisle Thompson are the best folks to help us through that process. And with that, I'm gonna have Stephen Bryce, who's a principal with Carlisle Thompson, come before you and kind of explain the challenges that we've met, and explanation for why we need more authority.
Thank you, Ted. If you would state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. Stephen Bryce, 5929 Tangerine Reserve Court, Mount Dora, Florida, 32757.
Thank you.
And yes, I am a co-founder and run the operations for Carlisle Thompson. We are a disaster recovery company that focuses on FEMA. So, and I'm sorry I have to be here, I'm sorry you were affected. So we're, we're very proud of our efforts that we've done so far. We've submitted five of the six priority projects that the city's identified. And thanks to Ted and Jessica, who's done a phenomenal job to support our, our team, and we've been able to submit to FEMA for their evaluation, almost just over three point eight million dollars to date. Pending, of those five projects, one project for two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is, is very, very close to being approved by FEMA. It's actually one of the more difficult ones, be approved by FEMA. And I, we anticipate it being paid to the city within the next sixty days. So it's nice to see results. Frankly, in the process with, especially with FEMA's increased scrutiny, as you've heard in the media, and bureaucracy, and their significant staff turnover, just to get these projects into moving forward has, has been a, a huge effort.
Sure it has.
And so we're, I'm, I personally review every hour that's worked, and we're very proud of our efforts, and we pride ourselves on efficiency and quality. We've got nineteen projects left. There's about forty different facilities, and we're, I call this the little pain in the neck stuff. It's the fencing, you cut a couple of lift stations. We're almost, we're almost finished with Lift Station 28, and that'll be an additional two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars if approved. So we, if, if we keep the momentum and the track that we're going, we, we're hoping to be done, at least with the FEMA submission by the end of your fiscal year. This also allows for one of your projects, which was the, we call it the Pump and Hall, which was the sewage removal, which was almost two million dollars, which was a very documentation intensive project, and that will have to go through what they call the Large Project Grant Closeout, and it will undergo state auditing and state scrutiny. And we've allowed approximately eighty hours of our estimate set aside for that. We don't use it, we, we don't, it's, it doesn't get used. So I'm, I'm available for any questions, or if you have any.
I have a question. So our total reimbursement will be about three point eight million?
Well, we hope it's a little bit more than that. Right now, our estimate, if everything we've submitted is approved, is gonna be about four point five million dollars.
Okay. And then, are you finding that FEMA is following through with their commitments, I guess?
First off, when you say commitment, I, I hear from FEMA the approval, that they've ultimately reviewed the documentation that we've submitted and they approve it. Once it's approved, then we see a large percentage of follow-through.
Okay. And, and then when would the reimbursement come?
When would the reimbursement come? I wish I could tell you. It's, it's contingent upon FEMA's review and approval, and once that, which is what I talked about, the two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar one, once they make the approval, historically, the reimbursement is ninety days. Because it goes from, the federal government approves it, it goes to the state, and then the state does their due diligence, which with your Pump and Hall, I'm gonna seg, segue that as, you likely will not get your Pump and Hall money for six months, six to nine months, if approved, soon.
Is it possible that FEMA will be dismantled soon?
That's a great question. I get asked that a lot with our clients. The FEMA's funded or authorized by the Stafford Act. That's a, it's a law.
Well, yeah.
There's, right? And, and so disaster recovery in our, our country is authorized by the Stafford Act. We might not call it FEMA in a year, or two, or three years, but I do not see in any case that the federal government will not fund disaster recovery in our country. How it will look, and what, what gets funded in the future may be different, how it's determined may be different, but I don't, I don't believe that we'll live in a country that is lets large-scale disasters where communities need to go unfunded.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I have a question. Sir, what is your total fee for the services that you're providing to the city, except for health?
Right now, if, if, if what's under your consideration, if you approve it, it would be right now a total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
Of which FEMA does authorize five percent of your total grant to fund efforts for our services.
Right, I saw that, 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 that figure is about, I don't know, four point eight nine percent. And then what, what kind of contingency do you have in the event that you have to go back for revisions or whatever? Is that all included, or is it a fixed fee of one seventy-five?
No, it's not. It's, we work on an hourly basis, based upon, if, if there's no complications, I feel really strongly that we're good. If the state or FEMA begins a dot of, of a significant audit and tries to make it difficult, it's, it's hard to predict that.
Right.
It is possible.
We just have to reevaluate.
And I can tell you that we do a report once a week, and we keep Ted and his team up to date. And if there is that possibility, we'll make sure that the city's aware of that as soon as we were aware of it.
So the original agreement was for sixty thousand dollars. So did you just, did this turn out to be more complicated than you thought, or?
Yes, sir.
How did you get from sixty, I guess, to one seventy-five?
Majority of that issue is your Pump and Hall. It's, every load had a ticket, and to reconcile that ticket, your billing, and proving where it started from, where it came from, where it went to, working with the vendors, and the, the documentation was very challenging. And it, it just required a significant amount of additional effort. Honestly, we never know what we're gonna get into when we start.
Do you just work for like municipalities or companies, or do you like help individuals?
We are, we contract with cities, counties, states, to, to assist them through the FEMA Public Assistance part of the program. But to answer your question, we don't work with individuals.
The reason I've been kind of skeptical is, we had people. The reason I've been kind of skeptical is we had people in town that homes were completely flooded, completely destroyed. And they started paying some money at the end of the last year and into January. And then we have people that the assistance from FEMA was just cut off.
Yes, sir.
So I'm a little worried about.
That's the, what's called the individual assistance side that is very challenging to deal with. I can guide you to people to talk to, but that's not, that's not part of what we do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And I appreciate your efforts, everything you've done for us. Ted, we need this fellow to help us get our money.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Exactly, and, and the, we're looking for payment from FEMA for this gentleman's services. Okay. Mr. President, I move approval to this item.
All right, I have a motion. I have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do, do you have a card? Can I get your card?
Yes.
So I could just, I won't make you stay longer, but I could maybe pick your brain. Thank you.
Coming before you tonight for the third item, which is the appointment of an audit selection committee. It's been a number of years since we've gone out for a request for proposals for auditing services. And in order to do that, the state says that we need to have this audit selection committee. So we put forward the names. In the report, it was Amy Chapel, Mike Ward and Councilman Burgess. And Councilman Burgess would be the chair of that committee.
They do a great job.
Well, I got set up on that, I think.
And we've promised to make accounting fun and exciting as you're sitting there listening to the proposals. It should be a, a short term gig, but we have to comply with state law.
All right, I'll entertain a. Do we have any more discussion?
Move approval.
I got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. All right, city managers report.
There is nothing there, but I will say, just I'll move to city manager announcements if I can skip real quick. We do have a special guest here and I apologize that we did not do anything for him, but I found out that today is Christopher Hatton's last meeting and he chose to come to Zephyr Hills because he's retiring from Kimbley Horn and he has been a, an asset to us, one of the good consultants that has helped us over the past twenty-five plus years. So I just wanted to recognize him for being here today. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you for doing it, Billy.
If I may, I would just like to add that Christopher came and began working for us. I don't know how many years ago, twenty, two thousand and two. So we were, we were kind of a fledgling group. I think he brought us up to modern times in a number of ways. And I appreciate all you've done for me as a manager when I was here and helping us in the departments. And I wish you and your wife the best retirement.
Thanks, Steve. All right, I guess we're going to skip four point one and go to the mayor's announcements.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Yeah, city council, thank you.
City attorney.
City attorney.
Jesus.
I don't have anything.
Thanks, all right, city council. I'll start with Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just pick.
I, I think we have good discussion, I think we have good debate. We don't always vote the same, but that's, that's healthy, that's very, very healthy.
I agree.
So, and, and we're, every one of us is respectful and I appreciate that, appreciate that from, from the whole staff. And Chris, I don't know why in the world you'd want to come to a council meeting to celebrate your retirement, but thank you for being here. Thank you for everything you've done for us.
Please.
Yes.
I, I appreciate the, the recognition. I, I will, I will answer that question that I was telling, actually, my office back and then July first is my last day. And, you know, I, I said that, you know, I've, I've served a lot of clients, but this is the longest serving client that I've, I've ever served in my thirty-four years.
Wow.
And it's also literally my favorite. I've just, like you said, you know, Steve and certainly Todd, Shane, so many of you, which is wonderful because your faces really haven't changed. It's really great, but that just shows the passion. Well, the passion that you all have for your city is like none other that I've ever served. I mean, it's, it's amazing just to be able to see the, the opportunities that you all gave to Kimbley Horn and hopefully continue beyond me, because it is, it is a family we have at Kimbley Horn, but just the, the personal, you know, experiences that we've had. And like I've told a lot of folks, it's, it's a wonderful industry that we serve, but most importantly, it's a, it's a friendship that we've gathered, you know, and together to be able to do that and just being able to serve you for all those years has just been one of the, the highlights of my career and a great pleasure. So thank you for allowing me to do that, because you still had to select us, we certainly had to work, but just the, again, the friendships has been something that I will take long beyond July first. So thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Muckusen.
I just want to take a moment to, like I said, the Main Street and the success of our little touch a truck kids fest was a, sure was a hot one out there and we are blessed to have some terrific volunteers and a, a great Main Street, award winning Main Street. So thank you for all.
All right, thank you, Councilman Beeson.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman Burgess.
I just want to say, Chris, you're going to enjoy that retirement. I've just turned seven years for me and you can't put a price tag on, on, on the time you have doing things. And believe me, you'll have plenty of things to do, so. And I just can't believe if Billy knew he was coming that he didn't have like cake or something for you.
Yeah.
Todd didn't tell me till the last second. We will, we will make it up, I promise.
Enjoy.
And thank you. I know we had a lot of discussion on the, on that one issue on the cultivation and, and like Councilman Smith said, we don't always agree, but we try to be polite and at least listen. And that's what I had told them before the meeting, that, you know, I'm going to listen and, and do the best that I can on it. So I, I appreciate all the input from the council. And on that, I'm going to close this meeting. Thank you.